All right, I am going to actually scratch the first two for Mr. Howard and Mr. Mallett, because we'll have you both discussing as part of the presentation. And we will have, next person on the list is Mr. Terry Rogers, representing the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Rogers, good evening, and always a pleasure to see you.
Good evening, good evening, good evening, and it's a pleasure to be here.
Indeed.
So, first of all, I don't know whether the mayor is online or not, just want to start by saying good evening to Mayor Adams, members of the council, and all distinguished guests. My name is Terry Rogers and have the honor of speaking tonight on behalf of the Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce. I have recently been re-elected to that position. I'd served several years back during the pandemic, I served for two terms, and I want to thank the council for all of the wonderful support that you gave to the chamber as you helped us navigate our way through the pandemic and other challenges that we had. The chamber gave us a grant to assist council and work with small businesses to help them file for their edels and other support that they needed in order to come through the pandemic. So for that, we're forever grateful and we thank you. And I want to, again, thank you for your opportunity to share our perspective now on the state of our business community and our vision for Bowie's future. The Greater Bowie Chamber of Commerce has served as a vital bridge between local businesses, residents, and government. Our mission is simple but essential, and it is to promote economic growth, advocate for our members, and contribute to a thriving inclusive community. And tonight, I'd like to highlight how we're doing just that. As I already mentioned, during the most difficult days of the COVID pandemic, the chamber stepped forward, not just for our members, but for the entire business community. And with the generous support of the grant, we provided the counseling, resource navigation, technical assistance. We were able to help small businesses secure emergency relief funding, pivot operations, and weather the uncertainties that they were facing. Many of those businesses are still standing today because of that partnership. Now, while the immediate crisis has passed, our work is far from over. We face a new set of challenges, and particularly, you know, we look at the Bowie Town Center, which was once a vibrant hub, is now struggling to retain national retailers. Ownership changes are on the horizon, and the future of the property is a little murky right now, we don't know. Meanwhile, we've seen a reduction in local family entertainment options, we lost the movie theater, we lost the entertainment center that was there in the town center, that's no longer there. And it was those family entertainment options, they were places that once brought our residents together. So, that's a challenge that we're facing now. And add to that looming changes that are beyond our borders. We have the anticipated departure of the Commander's football team, the potential redevelopment of Six Flags, and even the possible closure of USDA's agricultural research facility, all of which could shift the economic center of gravity in Prince George's County. These developments could either spark new energy for Bowie or divert resources and opportunities away from our city. So what we see now is an opportunity for us to get ahead of that curve, because we know that if they're going to redevelop, any redevelopment happens, and the Commander Stadium, for example, or even at Six Flags, that's going to be, you know, down the road, five to 10 years. But we want to make sure that Bowie is positioned and our retail centers are positioned to withstand any challenges that may come from people wanting to go to the new shiny thing. Okay, so it's our opportunity now to look at, take a very close look at our retail centers and begin to think about and reimagine how we want to see that happen. So the chamber stands ready to be a proactive, constructive voice in these pivotal conversations, and we believe that the future of Bowie Town Center must reflect the aspirations of our residents and the needs of our local businesses. We urge the city to ensure that any new ownership or redevelopment efforts include robust community engagement, and we believe the chamber is well-positioned to help lead that dialogue. We know the stakeholders, we know the market, and most importantly, we know Bowie. So with that, I want to thank you for your time, and we'll be talking again soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and appreciate your being here this evening and all the work that you and your colleagues do for our community. Thank you. Alrighty, that takes us down our list of public speakers for public participation. Next item on the agenda is presentations. So we have, for presentations this evening, an addition here from just a few moments ago to the agenda, so if we could have Mr. Mallett, I believe, is going to take lead on this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, good to see everybody. Together with me this evening is Fire Chief Jonathan Howard, Bowie Volunteer Fire Department, myself, Deputy Fire Chief, I'm the Fire Chief for the station, Free State Mall Station, number 39. We are here this evening, appreciate the mayor, as well as council's attention on a topic that we have been working with. We have the station down on Annapolis Road, Station 39, we had a failure in the front ramp, the concrete ramp, that had been there for a number of years, and we were on the county's capital improvement list. Through the Public Safety Committee here, we did have a minor injury, there was a slip and trip with it, it was about a three to four inch drop, it was a 25 by 25 foot concrete panel, and when you drive 70,000 pounds over it on a daily basis, it kept sinking. Make a long story short, we did apply for state funding, and we were able to secure 25,000 against a cost that came in at 32,000 to go ahead and make, complete the repair. The city Public Safety Committee had suggested that there is a budget, along with a couple others on council, that identified the, council has a $100,000 grant program that currently exists, it's identified as other charges, municipal grants, and the last digits are 55050, and it's entitled to support community initiatives determined by city council to fund $100,000. We were, had pursued attempting to secure the $7,000 for that gap between the actual cost and the monies that we received from the state, and that $7,000, and we were asking if the city would be able to entertain that for reimbursement. We have since paid the contractor for the work, and we were just asking if that could be considered by council to come out of that grant. We did go over the fiscal year time period, so in speaking briefly with the mayor, he had suggested that we do still come up and present before himself, I see him, hi, Mr. Mayor, and
Hey, good evening.
Good evening, and council for this particular topic. So that was the first item, and then I'd like to go into the second item when you're ready, but maybe entertain any questions for the first.
Why don't we do that? Anybody here have any thoughts or questions? Anything here? No? All right, fair enough, why don't we go ahead with item two?
All right, and the second item.
Thank you.
The second item is a staffing program, as many of you are familiar with, across the nation, having participants help in a volunteer status is difficult, no matter if it's Fire EMS, if it's Boys and Girls Club, a number of different things, I'm sure the city sees it with different committees it has with respect to volunteering. In the fire service, it comes with its own hazards and responsibilities, as many of you are familiar with, and though we have a number of members, we have been taxed with the ability to provide staffing at Station 39 24/7, 365 days a year. The county pulled the career staffing out of that station, we're one of 11 stations across the county that don't have daytime staffing or any staffing at all in the station. The other two, well, there's actually three Bowie stations, the Pointa Ridge Station, Company 43, and the station in Old Bowie, which is Station 19, that has shift station with some volunteers, the majority of volunteers all ride at 39. Station 16 is an all-career station, the Northview Station, not far from here. So, together with Chief Howard, we looked at some different things, where's the national, where are the national trends, how are people staffing volunteer apparatus these days? There's a number of different programs, but one of which, which is predominant across the United States, is what's called paid-on call. So you get a small stipend, nothing equivalent to a full-time salary, but a stipend amount of monies that, per call, that you run. In our particular case, we looked at that and how we would apply that. The majority of the calls are EMS-oriented, today's national standard is 78 to 80% EMS calls. About 10 years ago, it was, many of you may have recall, it was 70%. In today, 2025, we're about 80%. Across the county, there's some areas where it's probably just a little bit more. That is a function of fire prevention. As many of you know, growing up and through all the years, you know our annual open house, we provide fire prevention training for that day, and we believe that it's paid off because our fires are down. In addition to that, the advent of, and stipulation for fire sprinklers, sprinklers being in all residential structures as well as commercial structures. In Prince George's County, early 1990, we were the first county, actually in the entire United States, to mandate residential sprinklers. So, together with sprinklers, fire prevention, and other things, EMS is up at 80% of our calls. So the stipend program that we're here today to focus upon our efforts is to make sure the ambulance is out the door. If we have a dedicated ambulance crew, the opportunity to fully staff the complement of fire suppression, which requires four people, the ambulance requires two. If we're able to staff that ambulance full-time, it allows others to come down and just staff the fire apparatus. There is a benefit to that with respect to, an ambulance call today, when you run a call, it's typically a minimum of two hours, used to be an hour. Today, by the time you get to the hospital, you're there, you transport, you're waiting to get a bed, once you get a bed, you're out, two hours has gone by. Sometimes a little more, sometimes it's a little less. But the bottom line is, is that getting people to staff that ambulance, that would be our best bet, to go ahead and have people, that way we make sure that ambulance is out the door, because again, it's 80% of our call volume. The opportunity also that comes into play is, we fund a lot of our purchasing of our own apparatus, a lot of that money comes out of our ambulance billing. So we do bill through insurance companies, if they pay, they pay, if they don't, we don't go to collections or anything. But we're able to achieve, be able to bring in money, and that helps support the department not only for apparatus purchases, but other types of hard costs that we have to operate the department. So that being said, we, having that ambulance on the street, when it runs, it's $650 every transport, and as you can imagine, that adds up. Fire trucks today cost 800 to 800, about 800, $750, $800,000. If you get aerial apparatus, you're close to 1.2 million to go ahead and put aerial apparatus on the street. So, the benefit of having this ambulance on the street and being able to pay stipends, get that unit on the street, is, has a lot of different benefits, as I've kind of briefly outlined. So our comment to you today is, one, to follow up on some conversations that Chief Howard had with the mayor and others, where we said, we're making a lot of different efforts to build up our staffing. We know that the previous Fire Chief, Chief Green, had come and addressed the council and the mayor with respect to how our staffing was doing, and those comments may not have been as nice as we would like them to be, and we were all tasked to come up with a better way, get staffing in the station. So the program that I gave you a copy of is our ambulance stipend offering, this is, we allocated $20,000, and we're paying $25 an hour for an eight-hour shift. If that individual is on the ambulance for more than eight hours, it is what it is. The maximum amount, we don't pay overtime, we just pay straight eight-hour shift, and at that point, anything over is quote-unquote "volunteer time." Those individuals, many of them still volunteer on the fireside, but what we're able to do is go ahead and have those individuals in. We've had a number of individuals start to participate, we reinstituted the program in the new fiscal year, starting July 1, and we've had a number of individuals staffing that ambulance during the day, and we're expanding the program based upon what we're seeing to go in ahead and staffing that ambulance nights and weekends with the stipend program. Theoretically, when you look at it, $25 an hour with $20,000 current budget, that equates to 400 hours or 40 weekdays, a total of 10 weeks of stipend service, if you will. That's if we were to run it every day. Where, right now, we're not running it every day, we're essentially staffing it, we're staffing it a couple times a week, and our goal is to expand that more instead of just 10 weeks, is to go higher. So out of that same grant that exists, we were asking to also tap the well, if there's other funds available. If you were to say, how much were you thinking? We had 20,000 in last fiscal year, we tapped in a little bit of it, and then this year, we have the same $20,000 to start. We were going to ask the city if they would consider 50,000 to help bolster the fund. We're not going to eat it up in 10 weeks, or if we were to double or triple that number, we don't, we're not going to eat it up. Our goal would be, if we could, it'd be great, but we know we're going to be a couple times a week, but it's better than nothing. The majority of our members are gainfully employed, so during the daytime hours is, as you can imagine, is our worst time to try and staff. So we have a lot of members that are career firefighters in other jurisdictions, they work shift work, so they're able to go ahead and come in and volunteer a day or two a week during the day. Where we used to have career staffing, we don't have any now. So, in a roundabout way, kind of quickly stated, an update to the mayor and council through Chief Howard and his efforts, we've made every effort to try and right the ship, if you will, with respect to daytime staffing, since the career people have been pulled out by the county, and there's no, right now, vision to have them return to Station 39. There is a new county fire chief, on August 28th, we're going to hear some of her vision, but as you can imagine, it's really early right now, but she's having a town hall meeting with all the volunteer chiefs and presidents on August 28th, we'll be able to update others accordingly. But if I could, let me ask Chief Howard if he has any comments?
I just wanted to add that since this inception of this program, we've already seen 40 hours of participation, which is, you figure, one, two, it's five days that we had or ambulance in service. In those five days, I think we ran a total of maybe 25 to 30 calls, which is a significant impact on the system, on the county-wide system. So obviously, the first month, we didn't, you know, we only had the 40 hours or so, but it's a huge impact and it's going to work. So that's why we're here today to tell you what we're doing, we're trying to put it in service and trying to make an effort to better our staffing.
Excellent, thank you.
Hey.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
May I speak in?
Please.
First and foremost, hey, Chief, Pete, I want to thank you all for coming up, and I also want to thank you for all the efforts you've been making. As I said, I wanted you to come and present to council, because we need to understand the challenges that you're facing, and the challenges that volunteers are facing all over the nation right now. I think that we need to make sure we understand that what we're trying to do in supporting this, if we choose to, is to make sure that our community is safe, you know, that we can invest in you as we try to grow our volunteers, but also as we look at different ways that we can supplement. So I want to thank you for coming in this evening, sharing with council your ideas, but most importantly, making sure that we all understand, this is about saving lives, and this is about saving lives in our community. And though it's something that had not been added to our budget in any way, I think it is something that we as council should consider. And again, I thank you for coming in, and I do want to add that there are other programs, like the one we started at Bowie State University, to try and get more volunteers into the station. So, again, thank you, and I'll turn it back over to any council members who have questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll check locally here. Going down the row, anybody question? Anybody? All right, I have had the opportunity just ever so briefly to have a couple of words, first of all, with my colleagues. First of all, I want to say thank you both for the service you provide for the community, your leadership efforts, and the commitment you make, your personal time and sacrifice in serving others, that's very much appreciated, and it's benefited the city greatly, and we as a council are very, very much appreciative of that. I'm going to look to staff, Mr. City Manager, I think we're going to have a consensus here, if we could have you take a look at the requests on the two separate requests here, and then put something on our agenda for the next time, so that we can have a formal up and down vote for both requests. We can figure out the dollar amounts on the second, I know we have a lot of constraints in our budget, but if you could take a peek at what that looks like for us, let us know. And then on the first, I think that we probably are in a position where we have the funds, and we could probably just do a straight-up yes or no on the 7,000 that they're requesting for the repair to the apron.
Great. Thank you. Hey, City Manager, a quick question for you, as you look at those numbers, would you make sure that we understand where we have to go with that, whether or not we have to amend the budget or anything, if you have those dollars available that we can use? But also, what is the next council meeting date, so that we can share with the chief and Pete, to know when we can make that kind of decision?
The next meeting is September 2nd.
Okay, so you can have, run the numbers and take a look, and we can be prepared by then, City Manager.
Sure thing. What I need, was there some written request he made, he gave you, Mayor Proten?
I will, I will provide to you the information they just shared with me, and that can be the start point, and you may want to reach out to the Public Safety Committee, I think there have been some discussions with them as well, to sort things out through that way.
Right, I'll get our emergency manager to work with you all and to get the facts, and then we'll present it to you on September 2nd for you to vote. Right now, you do have $100,000 in their grant account, I mean, for which, I think you obligated $2,100 so far, just a running tally. I mean, it's, so, by my understanding, you have the authority to disperse that as you see fit with an official vote. Regarding to the stipend issue, we would need to know specifically how much money they're talking about, so we don't have to come back at it. And then, and then you all, as long as that number doesn't exceed your $100, you can take it from there. If it does, if you choose to take it from some place else, then we might have to amend the budget.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, I would say to that, from a council perspective, we'll take a look at what we believe we can afford to do from our grant funds, and get back to you, Chief and Pete, and again, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is city boards and committees, and this evening, we don't have any appointments or reappointments, but we do have a swearing in, and I'm looking for Ms. Henrietta Oseanto. There she is, please come on down, why don't you join us right here at the podium, and I asked my colleagues here to join us as well. Ms. Oseanto was interviewed on July 7th for appointment to the Community Outreach Committee and the Diversity Committee. She was appointed to both committee at our member, our regular, excuse me, at our July 14th regular council meeting. So she's already been appointed, so what we have this evening is the swearing in. So I will ask you to join for that, and for that, I have this, if you, I will recite the oath of office and ask you to repeat for me, and we will start with your name. I, state your name.
I, Henrietta Awu Oseanto.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance?
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of outreach committee member and diversity committee member?
Execute the office of outreach committee, community outreach member and diversity committee member?
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And here is your official documentation, thank you so very much, I very much appreciate it, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Very welcome.
And I offer you a virtual handshake as well.
All right, thank you so very much, and to those at home, if you aren't volunteering already, we may be able to find a spot for you on one of our committees, take a look at the website, we do have a fair number of openings, it's a great way to participate in the community, a great way to give back, great way to learn about the community, what's going on in city and local government, so.
Mayor Proten?
Yes, sir.
At this time, I will take over, okay? Thank you. At this time, we will have council announcements.
Mr. Mayor?
Any council announce?
Yep. Yes, sir. Just a quick announcement for everybody, tomorrow is National Night Out, that we have an event over at Allen Pond Park. I would like everybody to, you know, extend invitation to everybody to come out, see our police officers, particularly if you have kids, a great way for them to meet officers, understand what they do, interact, become comfortable, and it's also an opportunity for us as adults to go out as And it's also an opportunity for us as adults to go out as well, to interact, learn and participate with our officers, learning a little bit about law enforcement and what's going on in the community. So there'll be a lot of things going on, a lot of displays, activities. So please do join us. It's good fun. It runs from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other announcements before I go?
Yes, Mr. and Ms. Endebo Madu.
Oh, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to make a quick announcement regarding two things. One is unfortunately, I was unable to make the last meeting due to the one-year anniversary of my father's passing. So I just wanted to be clear about that and why I was not able to make the last meeting. The second update that I have for District 4 residents is recently, in the month of July, I had the opportunity to sit down with Prince George's County Chief of Police George Nadar and Prince George's County Deputy Chief of Police George Nichols, as well as Prince George's County Sheriff John Carr to understand updates on how Prince George's County is approaching public safety regarding technology and updates in priorities that they have going forward on behalf of the Prince George's County community. I'll be sharing that in an email for my residents, updating them on those learnings that I had from those meetings. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Just thought I would make the announcement. Over the weekend, we found out that the Federal Railroad had canceled the Superconecting Magnetic Levitation Train, or Maglev for short, the project that was to go from Washington to Baltimore and then on to New York. When the battle first started about eight or 10 years ago, four of the seven proposed routes they were considering came through Bowie and decimated Rockledge and could decimate Rockledge and the golf course. But that project has been pulled by the Federal Railroad system. So just thought I'd make that announcement to kind of bring it full circle and end.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Any other announcements? Hearing none, I'd like to just.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick follow-up, if I may, on Councilman Brady's comments. He's a bit too modest to say so himself, but I want to thank you for your efforts early on, in particular with the Maglev opposition. I know it was involved to a much lesser degree. There were a fair number of people in the community, but you played a significant role in that. So thank you for your efforts on that.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. And it was one of those cases where I was asked to advise a group of people on how they could do this. And by their second meeting, they decided to make me the leader. So that's what happens when you volunteer information, you sometimes get drafted. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I believe that's called voluntold. All right. If no other council members have any comments at this time, announcements? I would like to reinforce again, the night out. Councilman, before Wolfley pointed out, which is great because it's an opportunity for families to get out. It's an opportunity for us to not only mingle and learn from our police, but also to show them our support for them. And so I'd like to do that. And one last thing is I'd like to wish those from the islands, particularly the Bahamas, a happy and independent state today. And if no other comments, we will now move on to the city managers.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. At this time, we'll move to the consent agenda. I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, the motion carries. We will now move on to all business. The adoption of Charter Amendment Resolution CAR-1-25, amending Section 20, fixing penalties for violations and ordinances of ordinances of the city charter to increase from 1,000 to 5,000 the maximum fine that can be assessed for violation of the city code. I will turn it over to the city staff at this time.
Just getting to your agenda. I don't want to.
Any comment?
City Attorney is working on it now.
Good evening. This is simply a very straightforward charter amendment to conform your charter maximum penalties to the increased penalty that was provided by the General Assembly in the previous session. It gives the city some additional flexibility in terms of setting its fine in those instances in which the city may currently be having repeat offenders or other instances in which increased fines will be more effective at achieving compliance.
Thank you, City Attorney, for that. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak this evening?
No, Mayor. We don't have anyone signed up and no comments were received via email.
Okay. I would declare the public hearing closed at this time. And it is eligible for action. I will turn it to council if there is a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to ask a couple of quick questions briefly, if I may. And I think this will speak actually to Jamie on this one. With this change, do you have a list of particular infractions that you'll be coming to us later with increases?
We do, and mainly it's for commercial properties and the misdemeanor charges that are throughout the code. So that would be stormwater management and sediment erosion control, things like that that are misdemeanor charges. Those are criminal charges instead of the standard municipal infraction charges.
Excellent. Thank you. And I think for folks at home, I think this is critical to understand that a lot of times when we've had infractions, the penalty, particularly for commercial entities, is inconsequential and inspires little action or any concern at all in some cases. And then it becomes difficult as we have to then go pursue the monies and all the process. So I do hope that this will have some motivating effect. And I'm glad that the state level has approved this as well. So thank you both for your work. We look forward to seeing this come into action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Again, I will open the floor to a motion.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilwoman Rogers. I do have a question.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much. So the purpose of fines and violations is to promote compliance, also as a deterrent and for accountability. So I understand that. I also understand that when we talk commercial, we're talking, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about shopping center, I guess, property managers, big corporations. My concern with a $5,000 final penalty for a standalone small business may be detrimental in the sense that it may be too much for them to comply with. And so I think getting back to Councilmember Wolfley's comment, it's probably good to see what the maximum penalties are for what types of, you know, ordinance, you know, situations. Because I don't feel real comfortable with just going out with a blanket $5,000. Go ahead.
So this charter amendment is not going to set any fines at all. This is just, this is your authorization to set fines. And so the ordinance actually changing any particular fines, we'll come back to you and you all can exercise your judgment about how you do or do not want to apply your increased flexibility in terms of setting those.
Okay. So this is just adopting the new, the change in the state legislation that allows the maximum amount?
Exactly.
And we go back in and we fill in the blank?
Right. And there may, you know, you, on any individual offense, you all may take a number of actions, including setting separate fines for different kinds of violations, right? You can have classes if you were so inclined. I mean, we'll have to get there and talk that through when it happens. But this is just, currently, your charter says flat out, you can only set them at $1,000 and that's because for decades, that was the most you were allowed by law to set. So this is just implementing that authority.
Thank you. That's what I needed, that clarification. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And thank you, City Attorney. As we had gone through this before, I think it's a good point of iterating again that this is simply about raising the maximum that we can do and that we will discuss what happens or have insight into any fines or penalties and what those costs will be. So again, this is only about approving that dollar value for fixing penalties for violations of ordinance. So again, at this time, I will open it up for.
Mr. Mayor?
Unless someone else has a question.
Nope. No questions here. Everybody here is good. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of Charter Amendment Resolution CAR-1-25, amending Section 20, fixing penalties for violations of ordinances.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Any discussion? I think we've had some. So at this time, I'll call for the break. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
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 Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you, council. We will now go to item B, adoption of ordinance 0725, amending the code of the city of Bowie, Charter 5, Building and Property Maintenance, Article 2, Housing and Property Maintenance Code at 5-6, definitions to add a definition of invasive bamboo and 5-7 standards to prohibit planting of invasive bamboo and to require those who currently maintain bamboo on their property to contain it to their property. I will turn it over to city staff.
Good evening. Jamie Braun, Code Enforcement Manager. This law was passed by the state of Maryland in the 2023 legislative session, took effect on October 1st, 2024. Many of, many residents have contacted Code Enforcement about invasive bamboo, how it spreads from other people's properties onto their properties. It was expressed that they would like us to adopt this legislation since the state now permits us to adopt this legislation. So we created this with the city attorney and adopted legislation definition, stormwater management areas, city stormwater management areas, city-owned property, property owned by the state of Maryland, Maryland National Capitol Park and planning property, and properties owned by the Prince George's County.
Okay. The reason I ask is there's, and it's hard to tell where the property line is, but at the intersection of 197 and 450, the northwest quadrant, there's a heavy tract of bamboo that appears to possibly be on state highway's property. So would they be required to address this or?
Not with this ordinance, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I want to follow up on Mr. Brady's comment. There are a couple of locations, I think you pointed out, Mr. Brady, but there's also at the intersection of 197 and 450, encroaching underneath the sound barriers, we have some bamboo coming in to the maintained area of the right-of-way. There are also a number of residents that I've had to work with in the past year who've had invasion of bamboo from our properties, things that we manage, which is a significant source of concern and effort to beat back for our residents. And I know that you are responsible for the code side and not necessarily the grounds maintenance. And so I'll pivot over to Mr. Mears or Mr. Lott to fill in on what we are doing for mitigating the invasion from city-managed property onto others.
Well, Mayor Protem, I've only had one case brought to my attention. And we had our staff go out and immediately remove the bamboo from the property. So if you could give us, or the resident could give us the locations and we can check the property lines, if it's our fault, we'll remedy the situation. Simple as that.
Yeah, absolutely. And the city did, the city has taken care of that. And there were two instances, I don't recall the addresses specifically. Both were in the Meadowbrook section. And they were attended to with no small effort. And so I appreciate the work of staff. I am a little concerned that we probably have bamboo in other parts of the city that may or may not be encroaching on others. And I'm thinking we ought to probably have our staff take a look at some of these areas and see if there's any risk of invading on other, you know, on residents' property. So if somebody could put that down as a to-do for the, for these other areas, kind of to be proactive, because a lot of times our constituents don't know to whom to turn to go get the problem remedied. And I'd like to be in a position where we're kind of ahead of the game.
We can certainly check our properties to see if there are any bamboo encroachments over the next couple of months where we can give that assignment out or get a contractor to look into it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And by the way, thanks to, thanks to the team for working on this because I do know there have been a number of people who've been quite concerned about this and rather upset by their neighbors who just kind of throw their hands up and say, well, just kill it off. Which of course, if anybody has had an invasion of bamboo, knows it's darn near impossible. It's a lot of effort. So thank you very much. Good work.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time from council? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing at this time. Madam City Clerk, do we have anyone speaking?
No, Mayor. There was no one signed up this evening and no comments were received.
Okay. At this time, we will declare the public hearing closed. Is now eligible for action? If, I'll open the floor if there choose to be a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for adoption of ordinance 0-7-25, amending the code of the city Bowie, Chapter 5, Building and Property Maintenance, Article 2, Housing and Property Maintenance Codes, Sections 5-6, definitions to add a definition of invasive bamboo and 5-7 standards to prohibit planting of invasive bamboo and require those who currently maintain bamboo to contain it to their property.
Open for a second?
Second.
Second for the fourth time.
That means, that means a fourth.
Thank you for the mic. It's been moved improperly second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now go on to the strategic planning update. Representatives of staff, strategic planning team, will present the work they have completed on the city's strategic plan. I will turn it over to city staff. I will turn it over to city staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Daniel Mears, Assistant City Manager. So earlier this year, when the city council tasked staff with continuing the work on the development of the strategic plan, we convened a group of employees from across the city. Every department was represented. And so this evening, we have several of them to present their work thus far on the strategic plan. So I'll turn it over to Janay, Edward, Krista, Ashley, and Todd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please go right ahead.
All right. Good evening, council members, residents in the chamber and at home. I'm Todd Peterson, Director of IT for the city. I'm excited to kick off our presentation for Bowie Brighter, Smart Choices, Stronger Community. This is our shared vision for Bowie's future, where every decision we make strengthens our community and enhances the quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors alike. Tonight, we'll walk through the evolution of the strategic plan and the foundation we've built together, our mission, vision, and core values. This will be the framework that guides how we deliver services and respond to the needs of our growing diverse community. Our journey to this point began over a year ago, with city council drafting the mission envisioned in April of 2024. Since then, it's been a very collaborative process. Over the summer, we gathered input from mid-level managers and our community through surveys. By September, senior staff developed goals informed by that feedback. In December, we finalized the values and value statements to anchor our approach. In this past January, city council reviewed and approved the mission, vision, values, and goals. Most recently in April, staff worked through initiatives and memorable, measurable outcomes. By this September, we'll be integrating these into departmental work plans and budgets. This timeline reflects how deeply we've engaged stakeholders at every level. At the heart of this plan is our mission, to provide high-standard, cost-effective services that enhance the quality of life in Bowie. This mission underscores our role as stewards of the public trust, ensuring that the services we provide not only meet expectations, but create a city that residents can be proud of. Our vision statement builds on that mission, a thriving and inclusive community with great services where people aspire to live, work, and play. This is an ambitious and inspiring goal. It recognizes Bowie's potential to be a city that is welcoming, connected, and vibrant, a place where everyone feels like they belong. Let's take a moment to review our core values that will guide our work and interactions every day. These values reflect what we stand for as an organization and set the tone for how we serve Bowie's community. First, respect. We value everyone's concerns and contributions, creating an environment where all voices are heard. Improvement. We evaluate, innovate, and implement new methods to deliver high-quality services. We embrace change and seek out opportunities to get better at what we do. Accountability. We are responsive and take responsibility for our decisions, actions, and outcomes. This means owning both our successes and areas where we need to grow. Collaboration. We listen, compromise, and communicate with stakeholders to find shared solutions. Working together makes us stronger and more effective. And finally, integrity. We are equitable and transparent in our interactions and the services we provide. This means we do the right thing even when it's not the easiest path. These five core values will define how we operate as a team and as a city. Now that we've reviewed the mission, vision, and core values, the former foundation of Bowie Brighter, let's turn our focus to the five key goals of the strategic plan. These goals outline the priorities that will guide our work in the years ahead. Each one includes specific objectives, priority initiatives, and measurable outcomes to help us track progress and remain accountable to both the community and to ourselves. As we explore each goal, we ask that everyone consider how, how it connects to your role and the ways you can contribute to bring this vision to life. To start, I'd like to invite Janay Barber, Community Outreach Manager, to present goal number one and walk us through the objectives and the initiatives that support this effort.
Thank you, Todd. So our first key goal is save community, which seeks to improve safety in the community through education, engagement, and resource commitment. Our objectives for this goal is to improve the process to better route emergency and non-emergency reporting, increase cross-departmental conversations about safety, and update safety infrastructure on city property. The success of these objectives will be measured by the number of current users versus the number of new users on Alert Bowie and social media platforms, and the reduction of crimes against persons or property by 10%. Our priority initiative for this goal will be to update the resident reporting systems to better respond to emergencies. Next, we'll have goal number two introduced by Edward McLean, our Assistant Gymnasium Manager.
All right, thank you. All right, goal number two. Connected and informed community. Foster opportunities for community members to engage with their government. The objectives are to promote information sharing at events, increase community participation and public engagement, and conduct outreach prior to special events. These goals are measured by the number of community events, participation at events, council meetings, and on social media, and survey response rates. The priority initiative is to have more cross-departmental participation at regional events to promote their services. Next, we'll have Asher Diaz for Sustainable Practices.
Hi, everyone. Goal number three is all about sustainable practices, so not only incorporating, but prioritizing environmentally-friendly and long-lasting actions, really through all levels of our operations. So our main objectives here are to reduce the solid waste disposal tonnage, to continue to operate as a smart city, and to reduce our overall fuel usage. We will measure our progress on these objectives by implementing and completing the brand-new forthcoming environmental action plan, and by looking at the data that we have regarding solid waste tonnage and our carbon footprint, which also shows us our fuel usage. And some priority initiatives we have are to continue to implement that smart city framework, to expand the curbside food waste services, and to develop programs for energy efficiency, alternative fuels, renewables, things of this nature, both on city facilities and through resident programs. And I will turn it over to Krista.
Hello, I'm Krista Blaze. I'm one of the communication analysts for the city of Bowie. Our fourth goal is responsive service delivery, which focuses on adapting current services to meet emerging community priorities. To guide this work, we've identified three key objectives. To make information more accessible, especially for people with disabilities and people who don't speak English in our community. The second is to identify and address barriers that might prevent community members from using city services, whether it's cost, communication gaps, or other obstacles. Lastly, we want to spot emerging community priorities early so that we can respond proactively and not reactively. We'll measure success toward our goal in two ways. One, through customer satisfaction surveys, and by tracking increased participation both at events and on our online platforms. Currently, our top priority for this goal is to ensure that all city websites, documents, and social media platforms are fully accessibility-friendly. This is a top priority in order to address a barrier to accessing information for some of our residents, and has been federally mandated to complete by 2026. I will now turn it back over to Todd to talk about our last goal of staff development.
Goal five focuses one of our most critical assets, our people. Our aim is to recruit, train, and retain the best employees, preparing them for today's challenges and tomorrow's opportunities. This goal underscores our commitment to helping staff grow in their roles and feel satisfied in their careers here at Bowie. The objectives we've identified include creating individual training paths tailored to each employee's needs and goals, expanding positional satisfaction to ensure employees are fulfilled in their work, developing additional methods to measure employee engagement and performance, and providing leadership development training to build future leaders within the city. We'll know we're succeeding in this area by monitoring key indicators. Results from employee surveys, which will help gauge engagement and satisfaction, and time to fill positions, ensuring we're attracting and hiring top talent efficiently. By investing in our staff, we're ensuring Bowie remains a city that delivers exceptional services through, through a capable and motivated workforce. The priority initiative is to develop and launch employee surveys that will give us direct insight into staff needs and satisfaction levels. Now, as we wrap up, let's talk about what comes next to bringing this plan to life. First, departmental integration is scheduled for fall 2025. Each department will begin incorporating the strategic plan's goals, objectives, and initiatives into their work plans and budgets. This is where strategy starts to show up in day-to-day operations. Next, council will align this plan with the annual budget process to help ensure our priorities and resources are in sync. Your input helps anchor the plan with our broader citywide vision. Additionally, implementation teams will be formed to help track progress, support collaboration across departments, and keep the momentum going as we move from strategy to execution. The launch phase is where the goals and initiatives start to become a part of everyday operations, both internally and through community-facing efforts. We'll create regular touchpoints to review progress, address challenges, and adjust course as needed. Annual strategy check-ins with council, the Spark Team, and senior staff will be conducted to keep the plan dynamic and relevant. Bowie Brighter isn't just a document, it's a framework for action, accountability, and measurable impact. That concludes our presentation on Bowie Brighter, Smart Choices, Smarter, Stronger Community. Thank you for your time this evening and for your continued efforts moving forward.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, we can hear you now.
As I was saying, I just want to say thank you for all that you've done, the team, in putting this together and working on this framework. And I do know that it's not the easiest thing, but we do appreciate all your efforts. And at this time, I'll open it up to any council members who may have a question at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, you, go ahead.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, thank you all for the good work that you have engaged in on this subject. So very much appreciate it. I do have a couple of quick questions. The target of reducing our solid waste tonnage, one of the items there that concerns me is is that we have significant growth coming in terms of, of developments, South Lake in particular, that are coming online. So we're looking at more people. Are you looking at a per person or per household tonnage rate, or is it an absolute?
As the percentage of the overall waste stream. Like, we're just looking to reduce it by having those alternatives that we offer, the education on recycling and the ability to compost.
So this, so, so that should not be adversely... My concern is I don't want a target that's unmeatable, because we had an absolute number that then, you know, then you added a bunch of new households, and there's no way you could reduce the number of people. So I think if you're doing a percentage basis, I think that solves the problem. So, so thank you very much on that. Then the other is on the IT side of things, which is the compliance requirements for 2026. Is that 508 compliance? Is that the federal standard? Do we know?
I don't think it's federal.
Yes.
Yes.
So, so we're now obliged to, to live up to that same standard as well?
Basically. It's CAG 2.1, which comes from justice under the U.S.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, that's, yeah, there's, there's a problem with that in that it's, it's not a once-and-done. It's a perpetual burden in terms of workload. I mean, something we should be doing, mind you, I'm not disagreeing with the incentive or the reasoning for doing it. I'm just suggesting that we have to be mindful that this, this is going to be a meaningful level of effort for everybody to, to make sure that all of our communications are compliant. Having had some experience with that at the federal level, it's the gift that keeps on giving. So every, every publication, every update, all of it has to be compliant. So there'll be some processes there. So forward to seeing that. And while I have you here, since, you know, I'm going to ask, timing on going to .gov, will this affect that? Or is it...
The last, last we talked internally, we're shooting for January.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Yes, this is, this is me.
Councilwoman Rogers, go right ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your work. As we all know, that strategic planning and having a plan is just not a one-and-done. It is organic. It continues to grow. It morphs, and it has to be done annually in order for it to be a useful, you know, vibrant document. So I think you guys have done an excellent job. I think now the question is, how is the council involved in this? So there's a community engagement aspect to this, because remember, the vision that we've created is one on behalf of all the people that we represent or that we provide services for. So was there any conversation about, okay, you know, as we visualize and we come up with these strategic goals, how do we engage the residents of Bowie? Any conversations around that?
Hey, let me, let me take that one. So one of the things that we had in terms of the development of this strategic plan, we had a phrase we had early on that sort of resonated. We're kind of building the plane as we're flying it in terms of how we're evolving this. And your comment in regards to having regular updates and integrating this, so it's an annual effort, is part of what we're working towards with this. So the real, next big step is when the senior staff all gets together in September. There's great work done by all of our colleagues in terms of the development of these initiatives and the other initiatives. And now we need to figure out, you know, how do we develop the work plans and roll all of this, this out? So it is evolving, but the plan is that we're going to be bringing those elements off to the city council in terms of that implementation, and developing that regular feedback loop in terms of accomplishment of goals, getting feedback on what's happening, and then developing new initiatives as we tick ones off the list.
Thank you, Mr. Mears. The, and I don't, these aren't trick questions. It's just that this is kind of stuff that I, I like. So the other part is how we integrate that, and this is what you, you know, you talked about. You integrate it into your budgeting process, you know, those things that are priorities and goals, because you, you have your, your strategic plan, you have your goals, and then you have a tactical type, you know, boots on the ground, and operational that goes into your individual organizations. So it becomes very important that we, as a council, when you start gathering that data, that data helps drive our decision-making around budgeting. So it all comes full circle. So I thank you all, because, you know, what we had a few years ago, quite a few years ago, under a whole different administration, was, I think it was one page, maybe it was a page and a half. And you guys have sat down and you've done something tremendously, and I sincerely appreciate all the hard work that went into this and the efforts. And I thank the city manager and this deputy city manager and all the directors and everyone here tonight for what you've done. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Brady.
Councilman Brady, go right ahead.
Thank you. I want to start off by commending you for the work you've done. I've been involved with several strategic plans and development over the years and what have you. And I'm impressed with this one because it's more dynamic and more organic rather than very structured and very set by the calendar, if you will. So this could last a year, and we find it doesn't work. I'm not saying that'll happen. It could be 10 years because to be operating, that's how kind of unique this, what you've done is. Because it doesn't prescribe anything in a short term or a medium term, but rather it touches on what needs to be done in general, just for the sake of doing it because the people deserve that. So I want to commend you for that kind of an approach, and it works very well. I would just say, and this is a firsthand experience, when you do employee surveys, make sure they are 100% anonymous. And I'll tell you a little story. When I was in the Navy, we had a problem with morale on the boat I was on, 150 crew members. And BuPERS Pentagon sent out a questionnaire. And by the third question that was asked, it identified each person filling it out. Because it asked things like rank, time in service, the division you were assigned to. And for me, once you got to the third one, you had me pegged. So I want to make sure that any surveys are as best as you can anonymous. People, when they feel that there's anonymity to it, they are more free in giving you their honest feedback rather than giving you what you want to hear, which defeats the purpose. So sorry to go off on a tangent on that, but I do like it. I look forward to utilizing it, and I hope that we will get into a process where, if not annually, maybe more frequently, where we kind of pull this up and say, oh, let's see, where are we, from where we started? How have we advanced? Are there things we could do better? Are there things we could tweak on this? But I think you've given us a great foundation to move forward, and you're to be commended for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. Any other comments?
Ms. DeBernard has a question, comment.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Mambadi, go right ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I've got a quick clarifying question. First of all, thank you so much for the work, very informative, great direction. The focus for this strategic plan, is it mainly internal, internally focusing, like our strategy across our internal operations? Or is this inclusive of our external strategy as well?
I mean, I think it's mainly internal to make sure that we are performing the best for the community, but some of the key initiatives are, like, one of them that's in the sustainable practices did talk about formulating those programs for the residents, continuing to do that. But the majority of it is staff-based, so that we are the best for the residents.
I see. Okay, thank you. That's very, very helpful. Okay, so then, some of my questions aren't relevant and don't apply. For the one area that you talked a lot about, community focus and the events and the measurement, the metrics that you're using to measure those, I guess you'd say, connections, it sounds like you're talking a lot about place making is really kind of what it sounds like we're getting at. And I wonder if some of the metrics are the right gauges of, on what the community wants today. I don't know how many responses, survey responses you got back, but it makes me wonder, specifically as it pertains to District Four, are the events that we're having all of the events that the community actually wants to see, and that's reflective of the demographic that lives here today? So for example, like, I was just looking at the Economic Development Newsletter that came out today, and it talked about some of the homes that were being sold in Bowie and the types of families that are coming into the community. So I just wonder if there's a way to possibly add maybe another metric to kind of look at, are we even having the right type of event? Is there another strategy that we could be imploring that actually aligns more with where the community might be going and where they are today?
So let me take that one. So one of the initiatives that they had talked about was trying to be more in touch with where residents want to be to anticipate and really looking for that continual touch with the community to make sure that we are being responsive in terms of the events and the activities that we are putting on for the community. We have many things that we have that are traditional, we've done for a long time, but recognizing that we do have a community that is changing and evolving, there is a specific emphasis to say, how do we make sure we don't lose touch as time goes by so that we can keep our activities and our connection with our residents fresh?
So in that response, thank you so much for that, Mr. Mears. In that response, are you saying because that's an ongoing thing, we don't really need that as a metric for this?
So one of the things, we have more initiatives that we did not highlight as priority initiatives here. So some of that work that the senior staff is going to have to do in terms of developing and implementing this is figuring out, how are we able to measure some of these things? Because we do have initiatives that, you know, on paper, they're simple to implement, but they're difficult to measure. So that is part of our work process that we have to go through and find out how we're going to be able to get a true test of whether or not we're meeting those objectives or not. So more work to come on that.
Okay, awesome. That's super helpful. Then the other question I have, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask about, I always ask about technology. It sounds like technology is really a highlighted focus under sustainable practices. And because the, you talk about operate as a smart city, I don't know that I understand the connections to the metrics that are being used to measure the smart city. Is it just the implementation of the smart city framework? Is it possibly measuring the response to that, the success of that? Like, how are you thinking about that?
Well, certainly, part of that will be the implementation of it, because we developed that last year. So we wanted to put that in sustainable practices because a lot of the smart city goals are coincide with some of the sustainable practices, goals that we have in place. As Daniel said, as we move forward, we'll develop those metrics as we go.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a quick follow-up?
Thank you so very much. Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to speak just for a brief moment. Rarely do we have a chance to call people out at opportunities like this, but I think everybody should know that, kind of like the bearer of bad news, you know, the apostle of doom, but August 15th is going to be a really sad day. It's going to be the last day for Ashley here at the city. And I wanted to take a moment to say thank you for all the good work that you have done over the years. You've done fantastic work. I know that the Environmental Advisory Committee, you have been hand-in-hand with them, and they're very appreciative of all the efforts that you've made as our residents in the community. You're unique in that you don't just come to work, but you truly love your job, and you truly do believe in the work that you're doing. And it's more than just ticking a checkmark in the box. And for that, we are very grateful for your service to us here. As I tell people, I'd rather have, I'd rather have a great person for a short period of time than a bad one for forever. And so we are delighted to have had you working here at the city with us, and very much appreciate it and congratulate you on your, and wish you the best wishes as you move on to the city of Annapolis for their, I think you can be the environmental programs manager there. So congratulations to you, and thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? Hearing that, I will echo the appreciation for your honesty for all you've done. But I do have one quick question that you may have talked a little about, but that's when you talk about regular progress updates to the city council, is there a timeframe we see that strategically you're looking at making sure that we hear?
So Mayor, one of the things that's going to be developed, you know, we mentioned a timeframe like the 2026 implementation. We're going to have varying timeframes for all of the initiatives. So that's part of our development is how, what those timeframes for each initiative is going to be, when we expect to accomplish them, and how we can update. We want to work this into a regular part of our communication with the city council and dialogue to make sure we don't lose touch of the mission and vision that the council has set for us.
Okay, so you will be providing that as developed, as you said, kind of working on it while you're flying?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you all. You did a fantastic job, and I think you made a great framework. And again, we appreciate all you've done to all of you, city manager, assistant manager, but also all of you that have been on this committee. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, this time, we will move on to item A of the new business, and that is the Baltimore Gas and Electric presentation. BG&E representatives will brief the city council on the current state of the utility within the city, and I'm looking forward to this.
Good evening.
Turn it over at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, fellow staff and residents. I am Matty Bizzardo. I'm the Director of Business Operations, and I have the pleasure to introduce the representatives of BG&E. And as you said, they will be talking about internal and external emergency preparedness procedures that they have, the state of the infrastructure within, their infrastructure within our city. They will be also updating us on any projects that they plan on doing within the city. Following each presentation, you'll be able to, and have that opportunity to ask those questions and concerns. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Brandon Jackson. He is the Manager of External Affairs, Metropolitan Washington area.
Thank you, Matty, for all you did.
Yeah, thank you, Matty. Thank Matty so great. She's been so wonderful to work with over the past years. So first, I want to say good evening to everybody. Thank you to the Honorable Mayor Tim Adams and city council and city staff. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. As she said, my name is Brandon Jackson. I am the manager for the National Capital Region of Baltimore Gas and Electric. And so today, our presentation is a response to the legitimate concerns that any growing economic developing community may have. Can our service keep up with the growing demand for energy in Bowie? So I'm going to give the bottom line up front. The answer is a resounding yes. We can handle the current and forecasted demand of the city of Bowie. But tonight, we brought a few people from our team. We brought the Director of Capacity Planning, Matt Fiery, and also we brought Thomas Rosera to talk through emergency preparedness. There were concerns about our storm protocol, and we believe the best way to mitigate uncertainty is communication. So today, we have Thomas to talk us through on a high-level presentation of what emergency management does and how we can partner to weather the storm best, no pun intended. So we'll start first with Matt, I mean, excuse me, we'll start first with Thomas to go through the emergency preparedness slides. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Quick Buddy. Excellent. All right, thanks so much. Let me just try this out really quick. Let's see if it works. Doesn't look like it might. All right, while we work our way through some of the technical kinks here, I would like to take a moment to thank Mr. Mayor and the city members of the council for having us here tonight, as well as hard-working city staff here. Let's see if I can get a response to this. All right. I can work with that, that's right. All right, my name is Thomas Rosera. I'm a senior emergency preparedness specialist for Baltimore Gas and Electric. I work on a team that is responsible for ensuring that the lights stay on, and in the event that they go off, we try our best to get them on in a timely and safe manner. I'm going to be flying through this at a little bit of an increased rate, but if you have any questions, please feel free to raise your hands and stop me, just because I don't want us to go overtime, I don't want to eat into my colleagues' time. First and foremost, our guiding principle, our North Star, is to minimize customer interruptions. And in the event that customer interruptions occur, we want to minimize the duration of those interruptions. We do so by trying to adhere to a set of standard metrics that I'll get into a little bit more here in just a few slides. The emergency preparedness team is structured as you can see here, with a senior manager who responds to or reports to the Director of Electric Distribution, down through Distribution Services Operations, and then there is a Manager of Emergency Preparedness who oversees a team of seven individuals. You can see here that BG&E is obviously responsible for keeping the lights on, the gas flowing to a number of customers, 88,000 of which, or 88,000 and a half of which reside in Prince George's Count. Tonight, we'll be discussing two of our core functions, namely readiness and event management. So organizational readiness within Baltimore Gas and Electric calls for the implementation of a dual-role system. That means that everybody at, practically everybody at Baltimore Gas and Electric comes to work every day and has two jobs. They have their regular blue-sky job, which they may be an engineer, they may be an analyst, they could be a designer. But once we move into storm mode, there is a shift. That engineer could now be a patroller or a safety standby personnel. That designer might be a dispatcher. So we utilize the onboard personnel that we have, we utilize the personnel that we have present, and train them to be able to respond during emergencies. Another responsibility of the emergency preparedness team is to ensure that we have the plans in place to respond to these emergencies. So that's not just inclement weather, but that could be infrastructure failures, that could be attacks, that could be cyber incidents. Making sure that we have these plans ready to go means that we're not building the plane in flight, so to speak. Another big part of what we do each day is to ensure that we have the personnel who are going to respond to these emergencies trained and ready to go. This includes holding ongoing training seminars. This includes holding periodic emergency exercises, and it also includes attending some of the emergency exercises that our municipal partners may hold. I myself have attended emergency management drills in this very building upstairs. Another factor of this is seasonal readiness. We know that there are certain, there are certain weather patterns that we can expect in the summer. Increased heat leads to increased demand, leads to potential outages. So we make sure to stock components that we might need, we make sure to have the right personnel in at the right times, and we make sure that any personnel that might be taking a vacation are properly covered. In the winter, same thing. We know that there might be trees down because of heavy snow. We know that increased wind leads to trees down and taking our lines down. We make sure that we have the personnel and equipment on hand to deal with those things before they happen. And last but not least, the emergency preparedness team deals with situational awareness, making sure that leadership is aware of any threats or hazards that exist or are developing. This includes things like making sure that if there's a red flag warning, making sure that if there are special events going on, making sure that if there are increased weather, if there's a inclement weather warning, that leadership is properly appraised the situation so that nothing takes us by surprise. We try to be as prepared as possible, but of course, the weather will be the weather. So this is just a quick look at our weather alert matrix. Without getting too far into it, I just wanted to give you a glimpse of sort of what it is we prioritize when it comes to weather. We're looking for high winds, we're looking for severe-impact thunderstorms, those kinds of things are the most likely to take down trees, which take down power lines. This is a quick glimpse behind the build a sort of consensus between them and the National Weather Service and have multiple, multiple forecasts that we're working on at any given moment. But this is a, this is a look at how those weather reports are aggregated, and you can see that it's broken down by service stations, broken down by locality. So we have the, we're very fortunate to have weather vendors that can give us hyper-local forecasts. But of course, the more you drill down on a forecast level, the more, the more chaos you introduce on some level. There are accuracy issues that come with trying to predict weather on a hyper-local level, as anybody who's gotten a weather alert on their phone can tell you. Event management, once we do move into storm mode, our, our organizational structure shifts. It's very much like incident command system for anyone here who's had to partake in any sort of emergency management drill or event. We, we hew pretty close to the incident management system as prescribed by FEMA with an incident commander at top, general staff, and then section chiefs heading up each of the large And of course, like any good incident command system, it's flexible, it's scalable, and it's modular. So we activate the parts that we need and we don't activate the parts that we don't. The larger the event, the more of the incident command system we stand up. If our, if our capabilities are strained past the point where we can accommodate, we've called in all the staff we can, we've stood up the entire incident command system, we're bringing in all the contractors that we have locally, that's when we shift into mutual assistance. We're a member of the North, the North Atlantic Mutual Assistance Group, as well as the Southeastern Electrical Exchange, which gives us the ability to call out for aggregators from other regions to send us staff that are trained to a certain extent, trained to a standard set by those trade groups, so that we can ensure that we're getting high-quality personnel who know how to operate on a system, who are interoperable with our, with our standards. We can bring them in on fairly short notice. On top of that, we have periodic operational coordination calls and ongoing, ongoing tracking of the event. Should look, again, familiar to anybody who's been part of the emergency management world. Our logistics crews are part of this, are part of this vast machinery that we employ to make sure that everything goes smoothly. So you can't just bring people in from, you know, from Ohio or Wisconsin and not give them a place to sleep, not provide them with meals, not provide them with the logistical concerns that we, that, that you need to have a smooth operation. So we handle all of that in-house as well. Quick system overview, this is just to give a little bit of background in terms of how we prioritize our, our outages. And the big takeaway here is that we try and restore the most number of customers first. So the, the closer this, the closer an outage may be to the end customer, closer the outage is to the end user, the smaller that outage will be in terms of how many customers are out. So if you have a customer who is affected by an outage here at the number four level where, where a tree has fallen on an overhead line, this might take out a total of three or 400 customers. But further back up the system toward the, toward the substation, if these lines go down, you might be looking at an outage of 2,000 to 3,000 customers. So really, what we try to do is prioritize the most number of customers coming back online as quickly as possible. To that end, we do try to provide accurate ETRs, that's Estimated Times of Restoration. When you go onto our website to the outage map, the ETRs that you're seeing there, the outage numbers that you're seeing there are the same outage numbers we're looking at. We try to be as transparent in that as possible. And just to jump ahead here really quickly, the reason sometimes that in a major outage event, we might not be able to publish ETRs as quickly as we would like and as quickly as our customers and our constituents would like, is because we don't yet know the full extent of the damage. So when you're dealing with a very loud, with a very large outage event, so we're talking 50, 100, 150,000 customers, that's going to be a very complex event. And one of the things to take into account is that while we might know about an outage here at the, say, five level, it might also be an outage at the three level. So we reconnect here at the five level and the light to sell out to all these end customers, that means we've got to go further back up the line and find where that outage is, is being created even further upstream. So just some, just some perspective in terms of why sometimes during the early stages of a major outage event, it might seem like we don't know how long it's going to take to get the lights back on, or we're giving a very, a very general sense of when we might have the lights back on, it's because we're still assessing the damage. To that end, global ETRs can usually range in, in terms of their generality up to like 24 hours. So 24 hours, within 24 hours of storm passing, when it's safe to send out our patrolers, to send out work crews and start assessing what lines are down and where, that's when we can start providing those, those numbers. And that global ETR, what that is, is a forecast of the day on which we're going to have the vast number of, of customers restored. A feeder level ETR is, like I said, at that four or five level. We're looking at, we're looking at restoring those customers, and we can usually narrow it down to a 12-hour window, thereabouts. And those are updated as the work plan has developed, as we get on the system and figure out what everything looks like, we go ahead and update those. And then you get down to the individual level, and these are the customers checking the app, checking the website, and saying, and getting these individualized ETRs, saying, we're going to have your power restored at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow. And those are generally issued as work progresses on those feeders and as resources allow, if that ETR changes because we've assessed the damage and found out this job is more involved or more complex than we originally thought, we can update those ETRs to those customers. Quick overview of how, of the workflow where, where trouble calls are concerned. So the incident is reported via either the phone, the website, the mobile app. The call is received and handled by a customer care staffer who then enters it into the customer care and billing system, CCMV. After that, it's routed to the outage management system where, where we can track and analyze aggregated calls. So this is where we get into saying, oh, all right, so we have 15 customers have called about an outage here, they all happen to be on the same feeder, perhaps something's wrong with the feeder, we can assess further back upstream to make sure that we address it at the correct level. That gets routed to the mobile dispatch system, which are terminals that the field workers have in their vehicles, so we can dispatch to a specific, a specific resource. They go to where the trouble is and start the work. After that crew is dispatched and responds, they update OMS and that feeds back into CCMV, and that's how customers get their updates in terms of working on it, we're aware of this outage, this is what time it should be restored. All right, so that was a good 15 minutes of me talking as fast as I'm humanly possible. I'm holding out for questions. All right.
Mr. Mayor? All right, well, I'll, I'll start. First of all, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
I have, okay, there you are.
My pleasure.
Hey, go right ahead, Congressman.
All righty, thank you. Couple of comments and questions. First of all, website for anybody when they want to report?
Yes, so if anybody wants to report an outage, you can go to bgene.com. Up top will be an option to report an outage. There should be also an option up there for outage map if you want to get a look at the area.
And for those of us who would rather make a phone call?
Oh, I can, I can disseminate that information later. I don't actually know the trouble line off the top of my head.
All right, fair enough. So I did want to get that out there for folks. If, if there is an issue, that's first, first point of, of comment or, or return directly to BG&E to let them know. The, couple of questions on the transmission lines in our area. Have we had any, any problems? I know, I know we haven't had California-type problems. Have we had any issues in the transmission, on the main transmission lines in this, in this region recently? I don't recall any, I just.
No. To my knowledge, no, we haven't had any, any trouble on the transmission lines and in terms of wildfires or sparks or any, any vegetation coming in contact with the transmission lines. There was a small fire that developed on a transmission line right of way, but that was determined not to be, have been caused by our equipment.
Okay, excellent, thank you. The next thing I have, I want to talk a little bit about is ourselves. I obviously have some self-interest here for our community, and one of the things that we've made significant effort in is our emergency response, emergency management. If there's a thunderstorm within a, I swear, I think it's 100 miles of here, Mr. Cornwell has got an email notifying us, and we're standing up our emergency center to be prepared in case that comes our way. And it's been very successful in terms of being able to get, command our resources and to share information. And we've made tremendous use of our, our police, our rangers, our park and ground crew. And specifically, when we've had these things come through, we get our streets cleared pronto. It is, I mean, no sooner than they notify me that there is indeed tree damage and streets are blocked, I'll say, oh, six streets have been blocked. And half an hour later, I guess, oh, four of them have been cleared. And the, the reason I'm raising this is I'm hoping that we can translate that into better service, electrical service for our constituents. Specifically, if we have done the early work clearing access to the streets to allow your crews to get through, I want to make sure that you're aware that these, that there is availability there. It bothers me to think that there are people sitting idly by, unable to do anything because they're waiting for access, you know, for, you know, certain parts, wherever the damage may be throughout the county or, or the state, whatever the, the level, the scope is. And then it turns out that our neighborhoods are at the ready. And what I'd like to do is to ensure that you are aware of our, you know, free streets, free streets and open access to the problem areas. Obviously, our team isn't in a position to go, you know, touching trees on wires and all that kind of stuff, but we can prepare the, prepare the way, if you will. And I'd like to be in a position where we're sharing that with you, and I don't feel like there's enough kind of result from that, going like, hey, we're all clear here, and still there, I don't see people coming. And I know there are other people, there's always somebody more needy than I, but nonetheless, I know that we should be low-hanging fruit for you guys to be able to, to drive right in and, and start tackling some problems and, and take care of some, some customers right away.
Yeah, thank you for that. So I did just want to address the comment because we partner with the city of Bowie all the time, so we have a really great working relationship during every storm. I usually reach out to Maddy. She tells me what's going on, we reach out to the Cornwalls, because I think his wife or is at the city of Laurel too, right, or something like that, a wife and husband or something, city managers or something like that.
Lee, Cromwell, or Cornwall, excuse me, is our, is our emergency manager, and his, his wife does work.
It's for Laurel, right? So, so we just put the Cornwall on the CC and then send it all to them at the same time. Yeah, so, but, but I guess, and sure, what I wanted to say is that we definitely communicate throughout storms, from the beginning of the storm to the end of the storm, always asking how we can be of assistance if we do need to get a crew and the street is blocked because of snow or whatever it may be. We always get great responses back from the city of Bowie. So it's been a very mutually beneficial relationship thus far. So we do have some really great lines of communication, but if, if you have other ways or other people we should connect with too, to bring them in on those calls, we're definitely willing and open to do whatever it is that you want to do.
Well, I think, I think, first of all, Maddy does an outstanding job, because I call Maddy and she calls you, and, and is very helpful, and Leah as well. But I, I really want to kind of focus on this notion that I don't think other areas, maybe I'm wrong, I just don't think other areas have that level of coordination and support available. And I'm hoping that that is resulting in shorter outage time for our constituents, because we do spend a fair amount of money and effort to, to have our teams doing this, not just for BG&E, it could be for any other, any other provider and other things. So I'm hoping that there's some understanding that there is benefit to going, you know, take care of Bowie first, you know, it's clear, you know, and so you're not having people, you know, standing idly by. And I don't mean to say go take care of 50 people when there are 5,000 people waiting on the other side, I'm not suggesting that, but if you got 50 out here and 50 out there, please know that our streets are clear, the trees are out of the way. And if you need anything from us in terms of additional support, we're here to provide that and to whatever we can to, to help move things along on the recovery side.
Absolutely, thank you for that, and we definitely will continue to work with you.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I have anything else at the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Any other council members, councilwoman?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you for the presentation, you did a great job. I, I haven't had problems with my electricity since we got the gas generator. So we've been fine. But I did want to, one of the reasons why we, well, a couple of things that come to mind, the reason why we have you here is, number one, we have these new development going, developments going up. But number two, it seemed like in the older sections of Bowie, particularly like in, in your district, and I know where our office is over in District Four, every now and then, there's some up and down. And, and so I don't know if it's because the infrastructure is older. I know where I live, and as I drive around the city, I noticed the trees have all been cut back, so, you know, they're, they're hooped over the power lines, so I think we're going there. But we wanted to just make sure that we had the capacity to bring on the newer, you know, these new developments, and number two was the older infrastructure and what's going on with that.
Yeah, thank you so much. So, so we have, I guess, two segments of the presentation.
Okay, good.
So this part is really more so focused on like the storms, and then the second part, we're going to bring Matt to talk a little bit more about the capacity planning and what infrastructure we have in place that, you know, to its own for the upcoming forecast demand for energy as well. So we'll, we'll handle that portion if that's okay.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I would like to say at this time again, thank you to Maddy and Emergency Management Services, because I think they do a great job communicating with BG&E when it comes that time and we want to know what's going on. Maddy is right on top of it, and I do want to say thank you for that. At this time, we will move on to, unless there is a pressing question, we'll move on to the city of Bowie, the load growth and BG&E. Does someone have a question? Was that you, Congressman Brady?
Yes, it is, thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I guess we're avoiding capacity and growth and things like that, is that what I understood your comment?
Yeah.
Questions concerning?
The capacity questions will be directed towards Matt, so we have the second presentation coming up.
Yeah, just. But going back to being prepared for storms and what have you, you've got a great plan. When there's not a storm, what are you doing? In particular, it doesn't help to have a very good plan if you don't try it out on like a tabletop, to make sure all the components are there, all the connections are still valid, the people that you have in this position is still there. Do you do those kinds of things in between the storms to ensure? To make sure all the components are there, all the connections are still valid, the people that you have in this position is still there. Do you do those kinds of things in between the storms to ensure that you have the ability and the capability to respond without problems?
First off, thank you very much for that question, councilmember. Yes, absolutely, we do. I couldn't agree more that a plan that goes into a binder, sits on a shelf and collects dust is not a use to anyone. A plan has to be a living document. So we concern ourselves between storms with holding tabletop drills and exercises, with doing refresher training, with submitting feedback from the last event. So that we can improve ourselves for the next event and implementing that feedback on a proactive basis.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
I would also like to.
Thank you. Anyone else with any comments or questions on this area?
Mr. Mayor, I can also add just a comment. Last year, we did our first in a long time. We did an emergency management preparedness event. And we invited all of the counties in this national capital region to the city of Laurel where we hosted it. And we had all of the emergency planning teams come and we kind of talked about, you know, we, we lifted the hood, kind of sort of like we did today. Showed them the engine and say, okay, this is what we do when a storm happens and these are the proper protocols and procedures. And so we walked through that. We took advice from the different counties, Calver County, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, et cetera. And we talked about it and we took that information back to the team and we implemented it within our model. And so we want to stay sharp and agile to make sure that we can handle the, the demand that's, you know, presented when we do have storms. So I want you to just know that this is not like a static thing. We're constantly evolving, constantly growing, so we can handle the demand.
Right. And, and no plan written on paper is perfect.
Absolutely.
And you need to have that interaction between the different entities you deal with in order to make sure it still is a valid and appropriate approach to dealing with recovery. So I commend you on that. I'd encourage you to do that annually or every two years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brady. At this time, I believe we're positioned to move forward with the next portion of your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name's Matt Fiery. I'm director of our distribution planning, smart grid innovation at BGE. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the capacity planning portion of our distribution system, which is one of the teams that, that I'm responsible for. And it sounds like we have some good questions here that hopefully I'll be able to answer. But if not, if there's anything that we can take back and provide additional insight to, happy to do that as well, if there's anything that's, that's very specific. I do have a few slides. I'll do a good bit just though of talking about our process, how we anticipate handling the different types of load growth that we're seeing on our system. But we'll start with, as you saw from Thomas's presentation, our substations. We have a variety of different substations that serve, you know, the Bowie area and the, and the surrounding locations. Those, those substations are really where my team on the distribution planning side starts. We are forecasting load at substations and at feeders and making sure that we have adequate capabilities on both the feeder and, and substation level. And that's where we start getting into the forecasting of, of load growth and making sure that that infrastructure is capable of providing enough energy to supply customers irrespective of, of where they are. So we'll go to the next slide. I do call out a few key areas that we have more specific insight into load growth that's going to be occurring. And we, we include the amount of, of energy that we expect to be coming on our system. But if I kind of take a step back and maybe talk about our planning process in general, there's a number of different layers that we incorporate. We have the known load growth when customers have submitted an application to BGE to say, hey, we are building in this area. This is the type of equipment that we expect to bring online. And in turn, this is the amount of energy that's required for you to serve. We pull together this plan that's forward-looking 10 to 15 years. So certainly the areas that we have more specifics on means they're probably only a year out, two years out, maybe a bit further in certain instances. We also overlay other types of factors. We recently upgraded some software to the extent we're now industry-leading with how we forecast this load growth. Over the last several years, we have been in a state where load growth has actually been flat borderline decreasing because of a variety of energy efficiency options, all of that. Now with the proliferation of electric vehicles, you know, data centers coming online, we're actually seeing, you know, a pretty significant uptick in, in load growth. And what our new software is able to do is able to distinguish those different types of load growths and being able to look at different economic factors to be able to forecast. Where we see maybe there's more EV load growth in certain areas than others. Maybe there's certain locations where we're more likely to see data center aggregation and things of that nature. And that gives us a better understanding of knowing where are we most likely going to need infrastructure in the future so we can be most efficient deploying our capital. You know, installing a new substation is tens of millions of dollars. We want to make sure that we have a good understanding and enough runway to be able to actually get that new substation in service to be able to provide, you know, the service that our customers expect. So we, we go through this planning process twice a year. We have some feeders that, and substations that have energy peaks in the summer, others in the winter. And so that plan gets revisited every six months, looking at both the summer and winter peaks. So it's constantly being refreshed. We're constantly looking at what the new known load growth is, any other changes that have occurred. So just recently, we finished up the planning of our, our winter cycle. We saw some changes in policy at the federal level with tax credits. And that certainly is going to trickle down into how much EV load growth we can expect. That will get updated in our forecast in this next six-month cycle. And that's important because one, we do need to be able to provide service to customers. But we also want to make sure that we are not overbuilding our system and not course correcting. Because what we don't want to do is have an indication that we have significant load growth, something changes. And then we're building infrastructure that maybe we don't need for another two years, five years, because conditions change since we first identified a constraint. So our, our processes actually look both ways, is trying to be as cost-effective as we can be when we're deploying capital, because we know that's paid for by customers. But also making sure that we're there to provide that, that base need when customers do request it. And what you'll see here, this is, you know, a very rudimentary depiction. It does not demonstrate, you know, where our, exactly where our feeders are. But it's, it's really indicative of the fact that we do have significant capacity in the current state to be able to serve customers in the, in the greater Bowie area. If I were to aggregate the amount of capacity we have, we're talking a few hundred megawatts in our, in our current state. That changes year over year, right? When we look X number of years out and factor in the different types of load growth. But if you were to add up all the, the new service that's coming on from one of the prior slides, we're only looking at a few dozen megawatts. So a few dozen versus a few hundred, we're in a, a good position to be able to continue to serve, serve customers, do so reliably. And so we don't have any, any immediate concerns about being able to provide service because it's not just a, a safety implication. You know, the reason that we have to upgrade infrastructure is you can only push so much energy through a wire before it overheats. So much energy through a transformer before it's, you're, you're vocably damaged. And so we take that very seriously because getting a new transformer at a substation is millions of dollars. It's multi-year lead times. It can put us in a really difficult position if that type of equipment is, is damaged. So one of our top priorities when we think about, you know, prioritizing work, it's, it's safety and ability to provide for the load that's on our system. And that's what the capacity planning team is, is responsible for. So I think we are well-positioned right now to be able to provide for the customers. And that's it, you know, really at that distribution level. The other thing I'll mention is that yes, there's, you know, large proliferation of data centers. The data centers and what they are trying to accomplish, ideally, they're not connecting to the distribution system directly. Because the size, the amount of energy that's required, they are looking to really be connected directly to our transmission systems that have much higher capabilities for serving load. There are instances where they are connecting to the distribution system. In many cases, they're what's called bridging solutions. It does take a long lead time to be able to connect to our, our transmission system for a variety of reasons. And so they're looking for opportunities to connect at the distribution system for shorter periods of time, because we can get them connect quicker. Until they can get their full facilities online connected at that transmission level. And I mentioned that just because I know there's also a lot of conversation around resource adequacy in Maryland, making sure we have enough generation, right? Which is outside of BGE's control, but we do see the cascading impact that has on customers. We talk about PJM capacity markets and those, you know, trickle-down prices that get passed through to BGE. You know, we're advocating on behalf of our customers in, in that space from a, from an infrastructure perspective on the distribution system. You know, we are, we are very well-positioned and that's, you know, entirely within our control. This next slide is, is a substation view versus a feeder view. It largely shows the same type of information that we have, a significant amount of capacity available to be able to serve your customers. And then just a couple of specifics here of some new work that's being done to facilitate new load in more pocketed areas. There's dozens and dozens of feeders that provide service. Sometimes a specific feeder may get near its, its load rating. And in those instances, that's where we would provide, you know, new feeders to serve, you know, new, new customers and make sure that we're able to provide, provide that service. So I will, I will pause there if there's any questions or any clarification I can provide.
Yes, thank you so very much for that. And I'd like to start off first, if you don't mind, councilwoman. Because one of the things I've, I've talked with Maddie about and am concerned with, and I brought it up, is where we are with our infrastructure. I think Councilwoman Rogers kind of tapped on that when we were in the last presentation. But where are we as far as infrastructure? Concern about the grid, about the, the age of the grid and the, the transformers. What are we doing to, to improve that? Will they be replaced or what will you do to address that issue?
Sure. I'll be speaking a little bit out of term because that doesn't fall directly within my purview at BGE. But I have a history there. It's been about 10 years since I last spoke in front of the council. So I'm, I am aware of some of the reliability issues that we had, you know, 15, 20 years ago and some of these concerns. So I can speak, you know, a little bit about what we do broadly as BGE and how that impacts this area. So we have a whole variety of different preventative maintenance type inspection programs on different cycles for different types of equipment. Depending on like the longevity of a, of a particular asset and its, and its condition. Whether that's poles, transformers, clearance inspections, you know, run the whole gamut of different types of inspections that we do to make sure that our assets are in a condition that they're capable of serving. Customers reliably, that there's a low likelihood of, of failure. But just because an asset is old doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to fail. In addition to the inspections, we also have a variety of analytics techniques that we've also been applying. To make sure that we have a better understanding of, you know, an asset has been out there working reliably for a period of time. But maybe there's certain underlying characteristics that when we say take oil samples, certain types of chemical buildup in the oil can be indicative of a future failure. And that can influence when we replace assets to try and do so before it fails, but not so early that we're wasting lifespan of an asset and replacing it prematurely. So there's a variety of different ways in which we are looking at how to prevent outages. I will say it was noted too, from like a tree trimming perspective, you know, we're on those four-year cycles on the distribution system. So you will see, you know, tree growth occur over a four-year time period. And we'll come through, you know, trim that back to its, its four-year growth cycle as well as off-cycle, what we call hot spotting. So if there are areas that maybe conditions have changed, maybe there's a tree that has died and is now a hazard. You know, we can remove that in an off-cycle fashion because trees are, you know, the number one leading cause of, of outages on the system. So, you know, a whole variety of different programs that are geared towards making sure that we're preventing power outages as, as much as possible.
Well, I, I would say to you, quite candidly, I've experienced outages and talked to Maddie about them. And we've contacted you and got no response as to why.
Well, certainly, we can certainly make sure that we, certainly make sure that we get you an answer on that. So we can connect offline and make sure that we're providing that, that, you know, appropriate level of, of feedback. So I'm not sure quite where the requests were routed, but we can certainly commit to providing that information. We're not, not trying to hide anything there.
Well, I say that because Maddie is our point of contact. And I went through Maddie and we just didn't get an answer. So we'll, we'll discuss that a little further, but I am concerned about with all the growth issues. You have to understand for us, as a city, we want to make sure that we don't have any outages. And we, we don't believe that we should be in a position of where outages should be expected because of the age of the equipment. And not figure into an algorithm of when to get replaced. But we should be looking at making sure that those of us who need our, our energy, which is all of us, that we can count on. And, and I think that's really important for you to take that away to see.
Yes, that's, that's a very fair expectation.
All right. Having said that, Councilwoman Rogers, please go right ahead.
I just had one quick note on the Bowie area load growth. One development that was missing, which is primarily residential with some commercial is Mill Branch Crossing on 301. Where they have approximately 600 residential, which includes a mixture of townhouses and apartments and then some commercial. I just wanted to make sure it was, you knew that so it could be complete. That's all I had.
I'll take a look when we get back. I appreciate that feedback to make sure that we have it accounted for.
That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for any councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead. Councilwoman M. Dimamadi, and then we'll come to you, Councilman Brady.
I have two questions. First of all, thank you so much for being here this, this evening. Brandon, it's always great to see you. Two questions in particular. On the presentation, you briefly mentioned other and talk about surrounding data centers. We know that the state of Maryland, as well as Prince George's County, is making a significant push for data centers. So can you talk more about how BGE is modeling and preparing for those energy demands of the nearby data centers? And what role should Bowie be playing in that infrastructure?
Yeah. So, you know, some of the key things when we think about what we're doing from a preparedness standpoint, it's, it's a, I would say it's strategic in nature, right? Making sure we have the level of insight that's required to be able to provide this service. Because it does take years to bring that infrastructure online, right? So when I talked about the new IT platform that went in, I mean, that's, that's state-of-the-art in the industry. That's, that's one of the, one of the key first things. Internally, from a process perspective, is making sure that our, our processes are tight when we think about from a project management perspective, right? Making sure we understand changing dynamics from a supply chain perspective, right? Understanding lead times of equipment, what different types of risks are that are out there. Because the landscape has been changing pretty significantly, even with, you know, the new administration. Continuing to stay on top of those processes, making sure that there's not a lot of waste in the process from end to end. The quicker that we can bring infrastructure online, the quicker we're able to serve that load. So it's making sure we have that level of alignment across organizations at BGE to make sure that we are going to be prepared. So there's, you know, a few, a few different ways in which that's occurring.
Just a follow-up question on that, and you might not have the answer, but if you could just get back to me with whoever on the team focuses on that. I recently participated in a roundtable in New York, specifically focusing on the energy security in the, in the US. And there was a significant highlight of a number of different technology companies that are working with energy providers and utility companies to moderate the usage of data centers. To make sure that, that the data centers are only tapping into energy sources during their. their peak demand and not consistently year-round. So I'd like to understand if you guys are plugging into that, if that's something that you're actively integrated into and how aggressively you're pushing for some of those kind of, I guess you would say redundancies on our grid.
Yeah, so there's a number of different ways in which you can think about how to approach that problem. One, you could put the onus on the customer, that data center, to throttle the amount of energy that they're using during peak times and how you incentivize that through tariffs and rate structures and things, or items that are on the table and we would be going through the Public Service Commission, you know, for changes of that nature. What we found is, you know, most data centers want the ability to have access to the energy that they need to run their business. There's a little bit less by way of throttling capability that would really work. So it's really about having the right standards in place for our systems to make sure that irrespective of what happens on the grid, we're capable of serving those customers or others. I will say though, battery storage technology is another option. We have projects that are in the pipeline that leverage that, that can help kind of peak shave. And whether it's data centers and being, you know, more co-located to them or just other high-growth, high-load areas, you know, we can deploy battery storage as an alternative to upgrading infrastructure. Ultimately, you do need to upgrade the infrastructure. Batteries don't last nearly as long as wire-based solutions, but it can be a stopgap solution that ensures we're in a good position. And so is other things that are being piloted. We have filings with the PSC with respect to how do we leverage EVs that are plugged in? Do you use their battery storage, provide that back to the grid? How do you, you know, leverage solar and other distributed energy resources as well? So there's a very wide spectrum of technology and policy that can be used to help with some of those data center and other load issues.
Just a brief follow-up on that before I get to my final question. Are you forecasting any rate increases on residents as those data centers come online over the next five years? And if you are, are you guys working with any federal programs or state programs to kind of offset that cost? I know that's been a big topic as of late. So trying to get an understanding if that's something you anticipate coming up and if there's something that we should be doing as a city or are there any programs that we should be making our constituency aware of?
And just to make sure I understand, if you wouldn't mind repeating the first portion of your question?
Data centers. So are you forecasting any increase on residential electricity rates?
Got it. So the way, and I'm not able to speak to every nuance of this, this also resides a bit outside of my organization, but when we talk about when new customers are coming onto the system, they do bear a large portion of the cost that's associated with infrastructure upgrades to make sure that there's a bit of causal factor to that, right? So if someone is requesting something very specific, they're also bearing the burden of that cost. As it relates to it trickling down to residential customers, we have a variety of different rate classes that are used to help determine, you know, what portion of energy and infrastructure should go to different types of customers. And so the data centers are typically in that like large, commercial, industrial-type rate class. So you wouldn't generally expect to see, you know, those costs borne by residential customers. You know, there's a bunch of other factors out there, like I talked about with the PJM capacity auctions and other things that are largely outside of BGE's control, but we're advocating on behalf of our customers to make sure that we have that right level of visibility within the state.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that. And my final question is in regards to the EV fleet charging. Super, super excited and honestly thrilled to see Tesla on there. In 2023, me and my colleague went to ICSC and directly pitched Tesla and recruited them to the city of Bowie. So it's super thrilling to see something you initiated actually come to life. So can you talk to me a little bit more? I know that's a service center and a showroom especially. Can you talk a little bit more about kind of that energy capacity? I know you have it listed at 2,322 kilowatts, but can you talk a little bit about the distribution and how that's going to be made up and what that energy is going to be pulling from? Is it mainly going to be from the service center and the number of cars that they're servicing or where do you see that coming from? Or do you have specifics there?
Probably a combination of both. I don't have that level of detail. We can certainly, you know, follow up as needed, but I do know that the service centers have, you know, some charging onsite, so I imagine it's some combination of that building as well as, you know, some level of charging infrastructure to be able to, you know, hit that 2,300.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If you can follow up that information to this entire body, that'll be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I get into my questions, you made a reference about 10 to 15 years ago, were you involved with the Bowie electric reliability program?
I was on the tail end. So, you know, Rodney O'Doy is a name that comes to mind, Mike Fowler. I had a role similar to Rodney's a couple of years after Rodney.
That was a significant effort to address the problem that trees, especially in Old Leveit, that had above-ground cabling, it was in the backyards of everyone. So it was a major disruptive effort, but not all citizens were happy with how it was handled, but I think the reliability was significantly improved. So commend you for that. Out of curiosity, BGE doesn't have any generation capacity, does it?
We do not.
You're strictly a distributor and a deliverer of power.
That's correct.
They used to have some, they used to have Calvert-Cliffs, but they got rid of it.
Yep, yeah, once we deregulated, we no longer have any generation.
So you have a system, distribution system, that has a specific capacity based upon the design of the system. You're supplying customers that are drawing power from that system based upon the design of their homes and businesses and what have you. What is the typical margin between the capacity that you have designed in your system versus the nominal power draw of your customers? Is it 50%, 20%, 3% margin? Out of curiosity.
Yeah, it's challenging to provide an average for that. What I will say is, for example, I'll run just through a couple of numbers. A typical feeder, a 13 KV feeder, which is where the majority of our customers are served from, has a rating of nine megawatts of normal rating. We don't like to go over that, but you can for short periods of time without sustaining damage, go up to 12 megawatts.
Peak loads and the like.
I'm sorry?
So peak loads for short duration, right?
Exactly, exactly. So when we think about like our load forecasting processes, once we start getting to like 100, 110% or so of that normal feeder rating is when we have projects that are already queued up to be able to upgrade that infrastructure. At any given point in time, we maybe have a few dozen of those projects on our distribution system. So in the grand scheme of things, you know, a few dozen out of 1,200, 1,300 distribution feeders is relatively small. But what we're acutely aware of is that, you know, slight compounding increases going from 1% load growth to, say, 3% or 4% annually can make that number, you can chew into that capacity relatively quickly. But we do that forecasting on every feeder, every substation transformer, twice a year to evaluate what those different constraints look like. And from a macro perspective, you want to make sure you also have enough flexibility to do the types of things that you need to do. But we're not in a position where we have, that we're running out of options, if you will. So I don't have like a high-level number on overall capacity because it's much more local across the 2,300 miles, square miles of service territory that we have.
I appreciate that, but the problem is, is if you're approaching your limit because of the growth, then you've got a bigger problem down the road for everyone. So that was the reason for the question. How do you deal with obsolescence of equipment?
In, I guess in what sense? Prematurely?
Life expectancy of transformers, either on the pole or at a substation, life expectancy of underground cabling, overhead cabling. If you remember about 20 years ago, there was a hurricane, I can't remember, Sandy or, no, it wasn't Sandy. It came up and it caused the major feeder that crossed 95 just north of Richmond, the cabling came apart. No one ever expected that to happen and it impacted them for, I think, several months before they got it back. And I think they said it was a bolting, you know, it was a connection problem, not, the hurricane didn't rip the wire down, it came uncoupled, but when you're talking to high, high voltage line, major carrier creates problems. So how do you deal with that or obsolescence? That is transformers age, as you were talking about, you check the cooling oil, make sure they don't have PCPs of them anymore, but you go forward with that to check to make sure they don't degrade beyond their useful life. How do you, do you have an obsolescence program that goes out and tests and checks and schedules replacement as necessary?
We do, and like I mentioned with the variety of preventative maintenance programs, following those preventative maintenance, then you have correct maintenance depending on what those conditions are. But all of our assets are treated somewhat differently depending on the criticality of it, like our distribution transformers, the ones that directly serve small pockets of customers, right? Two, three, five customers, those are generally, you know, run until failure because it's nearly impossible to predict when it might fail versus, say, a substation transformer where you have far more data points that are being collected on a routine basis. You can be much more targeted and prescriptive around how we replace those assets. But that's a, it's a very, very broad spectrum across, you know, hundreds of different asset types.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. A couple of questions. The first is on the EV stations, EV charging loads. We're not yet, but at some point we will want to have some sort of capacity for fleet vehicle charging, you know, it may be trucks or other vehicles as well for the city's fleet. What type of planning timeframe do you need from that? I heard the commentary about a data center, certainly we're not a data center level of effort. Can you speak to that? And can you speak to a little bit about the locations of, the impact of the locations? That is to say, we have our public works area is proximate to the Priest Bridge substation. We do have other locations as well, but how does that relate? Does it make a difference? Does that help? Does it, is it better to have a, you know, charging fleet charging near the transmission lines? I would imagine probably doesn't make much difference. Can you help me out with that a little bit?
Yeah, it'll certainly be on a case-by-case basis because of the number of different feeders and where each feeder is on its capacity to serve. It could be, it could be likely that, you know, at that particular location, the feeder that's directly adjacent has plenty of capacity and that would be an easy connection if it's, you know, physically very close. If we run into a situation where that feeder that's the closest is at capacity, well then we have to look into a variety of different options. Can we transfer some of that feeder's load elsewhere to make room for this new EV load growth? Or do we need to, say, run a new feeder out of Priest Bridge to provide that level of service? Certainly, the latter would be a much lengthier, you know, duration because we have to actually build all that infrastructure versus kind of reconfiguring the system based on the existing infrastructure that we have. So a little bit case-by-case depending on how much capacity we have and how co-located is to existing infrastructure. The earlier that we can be brought in to those planning processes can also help from a decision-making perspective, even just providing optionality. There may be a desire to go fully electric and that might cost, say, $10 million or you could go 50% and that might only cost $500,000. It's not necessarily a direct relationship, but that's where we can help provide some of that insight too, is this is what the lay of the land looks like to help try and make the best, you know, kind of cost-effective decisions while also, you know, achieving other environmental goals.
Excellent. Well, we are slowly moving towards electrification. It's, you know, principally right now, it's individual vehicles. We've not done anything with trucks. The dollar costs on those are, they're still pretty exorbitant and that makes it a tough slog to kind of make that one pay out for us in a way that doesn't, you know, undermine the whole value of the proposition. The iterative, the four-year cycle that you have for tree maintenance, it's four years at which level of service? All the way down to the branch or is it at the feeder level?
Yeah, so we actually have, I mentioned the four-year. Our entire distribution system is on a four-year cycle, transmission's on a five-year, but transmission, we don't see reliability-type outages because of the massive clearances that we keep and other implications there. So really, you know, from a distribution system perspective, it's four years. And the way that that's measured is not necessarily only just a clearance distance, it's really based on the species of the tree and how quickly, slowly it grows. So we get essentially four years of growth clearance. And I'm not sure if that completely answers where you're going.
I guess what I'm getting at is there is a supply, I'm in a Leveit house, so that was that transition time. It wasn't underground yet, but it wasn't out front. So it looked better, but the maintenance on it was bad. I don't think anyone's been in my yard to do any, you know, pruning for quite some time. But at the same time, I also know that the line that runs behind my house serves me and I think two other neighbors, maybe three other neighbors. How often do you typically prune that section as opposed to further upstream on your supply side, which may be, you know, providing, you know, voltage for 20 houses?
Sure. So, and without knowing the exact configuration, we're not trimming downstream of the service transformer. So if the lines that are behind your house are from the transformer directly to houses, those wouldn't be trimmed. It's all the primary voltage, the 13,000 volts versus, you know, the 12240 that comes in directly to the house. So I'm not sure if that's the distinction.
That helps, that helps because there's, I know that in fact, the 13,000 that ran through the neighborhood actually got, a portion of it got buried, which is great, which takes me to my next question, which is that program that you mentioned 15 years ago, there was a lot of heartache and a lot of concern about the tree cutting, but what was also addressed was the actual infrastructure and there were significant improvements made. I haven't seen any kind of iterative follow-up. That is to say, okay, we took care of the, you know, the first low-hanging fruit, but we still have the, you know, the 20 next worst feeders. What can we do to improve reliability there? And what's the program to help with that? And then in another couple of years, it's the next 10 feeders that are standing out to the point, I know, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, however, you know, my service actually improved very soon after. I also purchased a generator. So it was, you know, that was almost a guaranteed result, but I know that there was a significant effort made, but I don't think there's been a significant kind of follow-ups on that. What is it that you guys can do, as the mayor was talking about, when we have these outages? I think they repeat in certain areas, you know, pretty consistently. What's that next round of, hey, we're going to start burying another eight cables of total length, you know, 500 yards or whatever? A lot of cases, I know they're not very long runs, but they can make a huge difference in reliability.
Yep. Yeah, so again, I'll be speaking a little bit out of turn, but based on, you know, my interactions with other teams and having served a similar role, I can speak to some of this. There's a variety of different ways in which we're looking at reliability, whether it's at a larger system level, pockets of customers, certain types of devices that are continuing to operate. So we have all sorts of different programs that have different budgets, have different purposes and intent, and that's, you know, looked at across the entirety of our system. So if we were to look at, you know, where do the feeders that serve, you know, the Bowie pop- Buie population relative to the rest of the feeders that serve customers in BD, offhand, I can't state to where that is. Certainly, it's not near the top like it was when there was some of the worst of the worst. And that's probably one of the contributing factors is that there's just enough other locations across the service territory that just have worse reliability. And similar to what Thomas mentioned of trying to restore, you know, the most customers during a storm, it's having the right level of cost effectiveness on these different reliability programs. So that's the kind of, without knowing the specific details of any of these locations, it's just likely that services is better than many of the other areas that we're targeting. And we also do look at customers that experience multiple interruptions. You may have heard that term or semi is how often referred to it. But each of those also have kind of different levels of, of cost effectiveness that we apply because sometimes you have those, those tails of customers who might have eight, nine, 10 plus outages in a, in a year, and that's just so egregious that you're going to spend a bit more money to bring that section up to par with the rest of the territory versus, you know, might have one or two outages a year impacting 100 customers, but you have to spend $3 million to underground a line. That's where, you know, the math doesn't always, you know, work out and you can make a variety of improvements in other areas that are, that are more cost effective. So a number of compounding factors there, but I think the, the performance in Buie right now is just better than, you know, many other portions of the territory would be the simple answer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions from council? Eric, no, no, I'd just say thank you for your presentation this evening. We appreciate you coming out and we look forward to a continued working relationship and seeing what we can do about carrying some of the aging infrastructure. Thank you so very much.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thanks for the questions. Have a good night.
At this time, we'll now move on to item B, the preliminary plan of subdivision PPS-4-24006, 2501, and 2401 Crane Highway. Mr. Antonetti will be presenting and his team for the preliminary plan subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robert Wong Coker here, the city's transportation planner, introducing this preliminary plan of subdivision PPS-4-24006 for a new Genesis vehicle sales and service dealership that's approximately 26,302 square feet of land located in the median of Crane Highway, US 301, approximately half a mile north of its intersection with Mitchellville Road. The property is currently occupied by two dilapidated automotive buildings that will be replaced by this development, to which is requesting the subject application be reviewed by using the commercial miscellaneous zone provisions of the zoning ordinance that existed prior to April 1st, 2022. We do have a presentation to show you all today that Mr. Arthur Horn from Law Offices of Shipley &amp; Horn will be presenting shortly. The Buie Advisory Planning Board met on July 29th to hear this case, to which they unanimously moved to approve this preliminary plan of subdivision in accordance with staff, staff recommendations. The county planning board has updated their planning board date to meet on September 18th to hear this case. Pursuant to subtitle 24 of the Prince George's County Code, a preliminary subdivision plan may be approved if the planning board finds the adequate public facilities exist are programmed for the area within which the subdivision is located and the subdivision is designed in accordance with the provisions for land conservation and tree preservation. With that, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan of subdivision PPS-4-24006 following conditions, which are to provide an explanation of how the subject property conforms to policy TM 27 of the 2022 Buie Mitchellville vicinity master plan to increase opportunities for safe walking and bicycling along the US 301 corridor. And with that, that concludes staff presentation and Mr. Arthur Horn is here representing the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Horn?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Buie City Council. For the record, Arthur Horn with Law Offices of Shipley &amp; Horn in Largo, Maryland. I am standing in for Mr. Antonetti, my partner, who's been the attorney primarily on this case, where he is this evening, and thank you very much for allowing us to come and present here, representing Witro Buie Number One LLC, which is an entity that's controlled by the Orsman Automotive Group. The applicant himself is represented by Mr. Xavier Camacho, who's the director of facilities with us this evening. We also have the land planner for the project, Mr. John Ferrante from Shipley &amp; Horn, the civil engineer, Mr. Chris Rizzi from Boulder Engineering is here, our traffic engineer, Mr. Dylan McAndrew from Lenhard Traffic Consultants. Although this is a preliminary plan of subdivision and not a site plan, we do have the architects from AHS Architects, Mr. Joseph Heisler III, and we also have, representing our community outreach team, Mr. Jackie Brown from GS Procter and Associates. That's a lot of people and I know we do not want to stand in between you all and your last meeting before we break for the summer and, and considering the time in the afternoon. I just wanted to say that this team had the pleasure of appearing before the Buie Advisory Planning Board last week and received the recommendation of approval, as you heard here. And, you know, we're here just briefly to ask the council for that same approval by adopting the findings of facts and the conclusions of law that set forth in the planning board's findings. We did have with us a brief presentation showing the proposed car dealership development as is currently proved in the median of 301. I'm hoping that the presentation comes through because I'm running out of things to say. So we, we, let me just say that just basically what you're going to see is that the Genesis brand is what we're talking about here and that's located, as we say, as the pictures will show, in the southern parcel of the median and it consists of approximately 15,000 square feet with the ground for mezzanine and the northern service building consists of about 10,000 square feet. And though those properties are currently exist, both the north and southbound 301 can access directly on the 301, only the access for this new development will be through the, what I call the crossover lane between 301 and northbound and southbound. So, okay, we can, oh, he's shorter, so he's keeping up with what I'm saying. But anyway, let's go back to the first one, show them the, the, this is the proposed Genesis building that will be on the southernmost parcel of the median in 301. Next. Just a little technical information here, year one sales, being in a new dealership anticipates about $21 million, employs 75 staff members, the construction cost will be almost $4 million plus the site work, the estimated property tax generated will be about $81,000 a year. In the service building itself, the, the new dealership, it would be about a million to made, that'll employ about 15 staff members, that construction cost will be about 2.3 million plus the site work and the estimated property tax generated would be about 54,000. Next. This is the site that currently exists, showing the two, like you say, you've been out there, certainly you all know, they're just storage cars and a dealership in the median. On the north side, there's the Orsman has the Jeep, Hyundai, and the proposed, those locations, and then, and it also shows you in the median where the proposed service building will be and where the proposed Genesis site will be. And by the way, the Genesis will emphasize a lot of the electric vehicles and stuff now. Next. That's just a site showing you what the current site looks like, where Genesis will locate. Next. That's too small to see, but that's the interior layout. Let's try the next one. Yeah, that's a little larger. That's just showing you the interior layout of the proposed Genesis facility. Next. That is the northernmost view of the site. And that is the service area, that's the northernmost portion of the median site. Next. And that's what it's going to look like in the interior for that building. Next. And that's just further showing you the locations inside the service area, service space. Next. And that's, that's the address of it. Next. And that's what the buildings look like. They say very beautiful, all glass building, very, you know, very attractive. And again, one of the most important things here is, as you all know, currently, all those uses access directly onto 301 and what's being proposed is that the entrance for the service builder and the new will be on that cut-through road between southbound 301 and northbound 301. And the traffic study indicates that it's going to be a service light at southbound 301. And so all of the entrances will be controlled on that side road and taken off of 301. And the uses that exist across the street as the additional dealership comes into play, that too will be directed towards that crossover where the light is. So all of the access will be controlled and be making a much safer situation and flows very well and coordinates it throughout. As I say, we have a team full of people here who can answer any specific questions you have. We do say that with reference to the preliminary plan of subdivision, we've met the requirements that are required to be able to receive approval and we ask this city council to support this application.
Thank you. Okay, if we could, at this time, I'd like to open for questions and then I will open up the public hearing, I believe.
If you're looking, if you're looking for questions, Mr. Mayor, I have some.
Yes, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. First of all, what's the timeline for this?
About a year and a half. That's about a year, about a year and a half before breaking, breaking ground, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, breaking ground in a year and a half or completion in a year and a half?
No, not complete, just breaking ground because you have the preliminary plan and perhaps a site plan and so.
All right. You had, on your presentation, you had the layout showing the, the two parcels. I'm glad that the access points are being shifted off of the main road, that's, that's a real benefit. There was a mention of traffic light on the southbound, anything on?
Correct.
Pardon me, anything on the northbound?
Nothing on the northbound. It, it has an existing D cell lane, but nothing on the northbound.
Okay, so no, no expectation of improvements there?
There will be improvements, but just the detail, the, yeah, just, it will just be improving on the existing D cell lane on the northbound.
And the property that's across the street that will tie in, that's not yet developed, is that a, is that owned by the same group?
The Orsman Group, yes it is. It was, they received an approved site plan, actually came before this council previously for another dealership at that location.
Okay. Do we have an idea on timing for that?
Depending on permit, sir, that we, that sort of planning, or the planning process. Once we add it, construction will be a year to 18 months, but depending on getting through the process, sir.
And what will be the brand at that location?
Probably at this time, we're, we're looking at possibly Kia.
Okay.
Is one of our thought processes on this time.
Okay, thank you. So that, that construction will tie into that traffic light as well?
Yes, sir.
So there won't be any need for further, you know, traffic mitigation?
No.
So the, all the flow numbers were taken into account?
Yes, it was.
And what about access for trucks? How easy is that going to be? Because that's a, that's a tough turn to make in there and then to, to get in a position to offload vehicles and I want to see, you know, a tractor trailer on either side of the drive and unable, you know, you know, blocking passage and you got people walking around trying to unload a vehicle and?
Right.
What's, what's the plan for, for unloading inventory?
Well, I'm glad you asked because right now it's on 301. This is designed, both the buildings are smaller than what the buildings are there now, and it's designed so that the unloading of the new vehicles or the tractor trailers can all occur on-site.
Okay. The, that's good to hear because I know that in a lot of cases, and I'm a little concerned we're developing a, I'm not concerned that we're developing a whole bunch of, of car dealerships, I'm concerned about the, when you start getting volume like that, all of a sudden, sales are going to outpace space and next thing you know is you're going to have people working in the street to offload and unload. So I want to make sure that, you know, whatever you can do to maintain that accessibility from that side, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
The, the next question on this is the, the two spots right now, they've not, we've not, I've seen cars parked there. When was the last time those were used? Is there going to be a problem with any, you know, cleanup and anything like that?
No, you, you control those, they, there won't be any problems with moving them, locating those, sir.
Now, I, I heard, I saw the commentary about walkability.
Yes.
I will say this, if there's one thing I don't want is to encourage walkability on that stretch of road. I don't know what burden that would put on you, but to me, it's preposterous to think that somebody's going to walk to there. And if someone suggests putting in a sidewalk in one, in front of one dealership in the hopes that the rest of 301 gets a sidewalk, I think that's a fool's errand and I don't think that that's worthy of, of anybody's time, energy and effort. And I don't, and while I enjoy bike riding, I don't feel that encouraging people to go bike ride on 301 is exactly the smartest thing to do either. So in your endeavors, I wish you good luck in dodging that bullet.
Well, we concur with you.
Because that's frankly a, a waste of time, energy and money.
We absolutely concur with you.
So I'm sympathetic to, to that effort, but I do appreciate the improvements that will occur there because I know those properties have been an eyesore for quite a, quite a significant amount of time.
Yes.
And we're looking forward to getting some improvements sooner rather than later.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilman, any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead, councilman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have any questions. I don't really have any questions. I really just want to highlight that I'm really pleased to see how all of this has developed and come out over the last couple of months. I know when there were some District Four residents that had some concerns and were feeling uneasy about this, a lot of the people involved acted very swiftly and very promptly to address their concerns. You held the community meetings that I wanted to see. You engaged them throughout the process, and you made the changes that they wanted to see as well. I'm very pleased to hear about the access points not being on the main road, especially as we explore with the state what needs to happen to 301 going over the next couple of years. And so I'm just really pleased to see how it's all come together, and just thank you so much for your partnership and the way that you guys handled bringing this forward to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman. Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Brady?
Thank you. I kind of share my colleague's concern about the hiker-biker sidewalk, and there's a reference on putting it on the, I guess, the southbound.
Yes.
Which doesn't make a lot of sense. What I do think, it should be in front on both sides, especially if you put the traffic light in there, because people do cross over to go over to the other dealership. So a hiker-biker along that crosspiece between the northbound and southbound lane on the frontage of the two properties makes sense. I don't see it making sense on the, on the east, western side of your property along southbound 301. So I would hope that we'd be able to get some language for inclusion. Our recommendation that the emphasis should be on the, the east-west hiker-biker trail, not the north-south. I'm sure you'll agree with that, too.
Well, we, to a certain extent, I do. There'll be a crosswalk when you have a light there on southbound 301, so that people would, then you know they cross now, but now they would be able to have a light and have a crosswalk. And there is some discussion about bike lanes that's there in the space on the side, but walking is, it makes it very difficult in that area, that there's not enough room. And, you know, there's a proposal for what they would like to see for all of 301 and I think it's F-16 and stuff, that comes down the line in the future. And it's, it, you know, the Bowie Master Plan calls for it, and so we're willing to address it, but the way that the, there's no funding for 301, any work on 301. So it's not likely that you're going to have much of a change of the traffic patterns on there, so it's kind of dangerous to have that, to encourage walking along there. So we, we agree that in the future, the plan calls for it, but as it stands right now, the safest thing would be just to have them cross over at the light from 301 on the south road and not encourage any other walking up and down of 301, because, you know, there's really nothing else that you would walk to down there. The residential houses is, you know, is further down. It's all automotive work in the median.
Right. Real quick of staff, there's no requirement that this, these two parcels on the, both sides be placed in reservations for the upgrade to 301?
Parking Planning did send us a letter asking us, asking us if we wanted to reserve the right-of-way, which would be that crossover, and we didn't have any plan or intent to use that right-of-way for anything, so we expressed our concerns to Parking Planning that we didn't have any intent to use that right-of-way.
Okay, I'm just a little surprised with the.
Councilman May. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Richard Hall, Director of Planning Sustainability. Redmond was correct. The important little piece I want to add is basically, the simple question from Parking Planning was regarding the reservation, it senses not funded, and that whole project's not funded by the county or the state, that, do you want it? And if the answer was yes, then will you pay for it? So that's, that's really what it boils down to. So I just want to be clear, we didn't just waive it off, it's just that we were not in a position to pay for that reservation, so that's, that's the core issue from our perspective on that piece.
So, so when 301 gets upgraded, this property gets taken and it's bought at the commercial fully-developed price rather than, what is that now?
Yes, that could be.
Okay. And you said all deliveries, the offloading of vehicles would be done on your property, not on the crossover?
It's designed as such, yes.
Okay. Because that is a major problem with other dealerships that, across the street on the southbound, where they use the shoulder. That is very dangerous.
Understood.
And I wish they would stop. Another question for staff, are the left-turn lanes, both northbound 301 and, I don't think there is one, southbound, is the turning movement adequate? I would think there'd be a requirement that they add a left-turn lane. I didn't notice it on the plans on the southbound. Or, or did I miss it?
There is one on the southbound.
Yeah, there is one existing on the southbound.
There is, okay, then, my apologies. I missed that then. But is the northbound one adequate from a distance and stacking perspective? Was that included in the analysis?
To my knowledge, both the southbound and northbound left-turn lanes are adequate.
Traffic light reservation. One last thing, give me one second. My apologies. There, there are two recommendations that the Bluey Planning advisory board and the transportation specialists are making in two conditions. Are you in agreement with the conditions?
Well, actually, they removed condition two. There's only one condition that's, came from the planning commission.
Okay, so the reference to the 10-foot-wide shared hiker-biker has been removed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and to go back to this question, and I'll check with any of the council members, we're still asking, from my point of view, how, the answer to TM 27, how are you going to address that? I mean, is it, I know I've heard, and I'd like to hear from staff as well, but from you as well, how do we deal with that? How do we address that, since it is one of the recommendations we should take?
Well, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'll read from the response that we provided. It says, you know, policy TM 27, it does promote an increase in the opportunities for walking for biking along US 301 corridor by utilizing the long-term road improvements referred to in the master plan. But as reflected in policy TM 27 of the master plan, such opportunities are intended to arise if and when F-10 and A-61 project is funded and constructed by the state and when include 10-foot paths and sidewalks along A-61 Service Road and future F-10 Freeway. The future A-61, F-10 will completely replace the existing US 301 alignment and travel lanes adjacent to the subject property. So the roadway project, including any related side paths or sidewalks, is currently not funded by the state, has been completely removed as a project from the state's consolidated transportation program. And as currently situated, it's not practical or safe to encourage increased pedestrian activities along the portion, which is what we discussed earlier. So basically, it's, basically, it's not funded, and it is, you know, proposed when the state is going to come along and create A-61 and F-10, but right now, it's theoretical, because it's not, it's not funded.
All right, and I'll go back to our staff and say, what, what is it? Do you remove that recommendation at this point?
No, we will still keep that recommendation in our memo, but with, with, with Mr. Horn, as already mentioned, that the advocate is coordinating with State Highway Administration to install a signal at that crossover road, and if they are successful, a crosswalk will be constructed along that crossover road as well. So that will accommodate our, that will conform to our suggestion to increase or to have some sort of treatment there to improve or to encourage safe walking from, like, to, from east and west, from the other, from the other automotive buildings on 301.
Okay, and so as we move forward with this, we're saying that staff still says that we include that as a provision if we were to accept it, and they would still need to move forward with the light there and the crossover, that we would still recommend that they address that for policy TM 27. Correct, sir?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to any of my council members who have a question at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a follow-up question.
Please, go ahead, councilwoman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I think this question is for Mr. Hall. When you had mentioned that they responded and said, great, will you pay for it? Can you just give us an estimate of what the cost was?
I don't know what the cost is, councilwoman, but it, I don't know if that was in something that we, but it's a significant projects beyond, proposed transportation improvements beyond this project as well, and it's been taken out of the CTP. So it isn't something that I don't think we would be able to entertain. Again, it's, that piece of that improvement goes significantly beyond just the projects before you tonight.
Thank you so much. I don't know if this next request is going to be for your office or if it's for GS Proctor, but essentially, my question is going to be, is it possible that one of your offices could reach out to State of Maryland and Prince George's County to just get an understanding? Because we have been talking to State of Maryland and voicing concerns about the widening of 301, and because of where this project is situationally located, what I don't want to run into in the next couple of years is, let's say, money appears from somewhere for whatever reason, and then now, because that's not something that we explored in this moment, we miss out on an opportunity. So is that something that one of your offices can just reach out to them and see if there's any planning or there's any type of action that they can take on their side to be a little bit more mindful of that proactively, since we're not in a place to do that?
Absolutely. We, we had to check with them before we even began this process, and as you know, it hasn't been funded for 301 for probably two decades. It's been taken out, you know, most recently, the consolidated storage facility on 301 in the medium. As you go all the way up, there are several projects that's going forward in the medium here in Bowie vicinity, because, you know, the only, the improvement of 301 comes by way of development. South Lake improves and National Capital Business Park, they all improved the 301, widening of 301. The state simply says they don't have any money, but we will follow up and follow up with you for sure.
Yes, please, because I, when we did have State Highway here, one of the things that they talked about was us needing a new study, so I do know that County Councilmember Watson and Blige were working with our District Three engineer to request a new study be done. So I don't want that study to come in the next year, and then this process has gone impassive. You could just circle back with them.
Absolutely.
And then follow up with me, that would be super helpful. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Any other questions by councilmembers? I am not hearing any. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Now, City Clerk, do we have anyone commenting?
No, Mayor, there's no one signed up to speak, and no comments were received.
Okay, I will now declare the public hearing closed, and I will open the floor to my council We can take action if we choose to, so I'd like to know where council stands at this time.
Do you want to make the motion? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of preliminary plan of subdivision PPS-4-24006 and the plan of subdivision PPS-42462501 and 2405 Crane Highway. Yes.
Second.
It's been proved and moved and properly second. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. All in the same favor. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. I know it's your birthday today, I heard that.
Hey, thank you so very much, that's kind of you. At this time, I will turn it over to Mayor Proten.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make everybody's favorite motion, and that is to adjourn.
Second.
Wait a minute.
It's been moved and properly.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor. We, we need officially from this day us a birthday wish for you. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you so very much.
Happy birthday.
That's very kind of all of you. Thank you so very much.
All right.
So now.
Okay.
Hey, so now we can do that motion. Go ahead.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second. All in favor, please respond with an aye. Aye. All in the same favor, hearing none, motion carries. Hey, I'd like to say thank you to everyone. Councilman before, Councilwoman Andrew Bhamadu, Councilman Brady, Councilwoman Rogers, and all of our folks who are out there tonight who stuck with us through this process. We'll see you again in September. Did I miss any councilmembers?
Yes. You got all of us. Happy birthday.
Not that we're checking out, but happy birthday.
Everybody have a great night.
Thank you, you too. Good night.
Good.